Is staff ready to go?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's patience that we've just had in a closed session. So that's why we're a couple of minutes late. But let's go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council regular meeting of March the 8, 2022 to order. And may we please have roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason is not present. Um, Mayor Medina?
Here. Um, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of Flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll go ahead and open it up to, um, item number four, which is public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Individuals will have up to three minutes. Councils supposed to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from acting upon any matter not agendaized, uh, due into state law. We do have to pause at, uh, 7:10. So we will take the public and we'll see if we have to continue public comment after the public hearing. And, um, um, city clerk, if you could assist us.
Yes, the first speaker is Joe in Virginia Yankee. I apologize for saying that wrong. I'm trying to unmute them now, just one moment.
Did I, did I do that?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, this is Joe Yak. I'm a 50-year resident of San Bruno. And I'm calling about the senior center lunch program, which I think is really great. But the problem is that a lot of other people think it's great too, and there's limited capacity. So our, our program is so popular that we get groups of people from San Francisco and East Bay that come over and have lunch and use up all the, the spaces. So there's little room for San Bruno residents. And since it's our senior center, I kind of wish we could somehow solve that problem. Um, the worst situation is, let's say, a San Bruno resident shows up and would like to have a lunch. So he goes to sign up and finds out that it's sold out. So you look on the log and see where all these people come from. And you didn't realize that this place is so popular. Other situations, let's say there's a deal where you really, really want to go to this lunch. What you have to do is drive up to the senior center at 9:00 AM, sign in, go back home and come back at 11 o'clock to sit there for an hour because you have to get there early to get a seat. Um, for a lunch, it's at 11 o'clock. I'm just letting you know that this is, uh, kind of an annoyance. You know, like if, if you want to use one of San Francisco's golf courses as a non-resident, you pay through the nose. But if you're a San Francisco resident, it's very economical. So maybe we could do something like that, or maybe we could make reservations. Um, I hope you can do something. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is, um, I'm sorry, it just says owner. So I'm not, I'm not sure who that is. I'll bring them in now.
Yes, good evening. Uh, this is Jim Evangelist, 105 De Soto Way. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, gonna make a statement, um, tonight. Making my statement last council meeting. Um, regarding the chaos that seemed to be surrounding the, um, a park project. Three council members, the mayor being one of these recipients. Understanding the newly established protocols surrounding council communication with residents, where the mayor is the spokesman for the council, I expected a response. Instead, only one council member even acknowledged receipt of the mail, of the email. Thank you, Marty. I asked questions that, if answered, would clear up confusion concerning the park project for me. Now I will put in public record my questions. Number one, explain why infrastructure upgrading of the water sewer and storm drain system were not included in the scope of work for this project. Number two, explain why our solar component was not included in the design of the building. You don't realize that this, what this statement, what kind of a statement this makes? Imagine in the journal, the same, it, it, the headlines, "The San Bruno builds community center money obtained from the settlement arrived at because of an explosion of fossil fuels." The second sentence announces, "San Bruno does not include any renewable energy components in the new building." Meanwhile, $30 million sits in the quasi-endowment fund. And the complaint is they don't have enough money for the, um, solar component. And number three, explain why the monies in the quasi-endowment seem to be untouchable to the elected officials of San Bruno. I would like legal explanation and not an opinion on this important matter. And over the years, the members, including those sitting on the council now, complaining that people don't, uh, don't watch, aren't involved in the San Bruno politics. Well, being ignored, as I was here and have been before, is a surefire way to ensure aptity among your residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
There are no other hands raised. Uh, one hand just went up, Mayor, but we are at 7:09. How do you want to proceed?
We're gonna need to buy, what I'm told is we are going to need to proceed over to the public hearing and have to come back to, uh, public comment since we are at about 7:10. So we will go back to, uh, public comments after our public hearing. So at this time, we're going to move on to public hearing, which is at 7:10 exact. And this is to item A is hold the fifth public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance to adopt a district map and amend municipal code chapter 2.32.010, general municipal elections. And I'd like to turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Uh, I will turn it directly to Kristen Parks. Uh, she is here from, uh, NDC, our demographic consultant. Uh, we will also, as a part of this presentation, have a presentation from Melanie Moore from Tri-Pepe Smith, uh, who has been supporting the city with our community outreach and engagement efforts. Uh, again, tonight, you have your entire city team that has been working on this effort. Uh, myself, Assistant City Manager Jennifer Brazil, um, Assistant for the City Manager Jennifer Giano, City Clerk Melissa Thurman, and of course, uh, City Attorney Mark Saffrono, here to support the city council along with NDC and Tri-Pepe Smith in your deliberation. So, uh, with that, Kristen Parks, please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you. You have seen, uh, most of this before. There's a little bit of new, uh, decisions to be made this evening. Um, and of course, there will be another present presenter with me, and that will be Melanie, uh, in just a few moments. So overview, uh, very similar to the previous presentation you saw me make. A little bit of background for members of the public who may be tuning into the districting process for the first time, just to review how we got here, what we're doing, what our timeline is. Then Melanie will give you an outreach and community engagement update. And then, uh, I will review the legal requirements, the preferred map that's being considered for San Bruno, and talk about the election sequencing. So background, uh, currently in the city of San Bruno, both the mayor and council members are currently elected at large. What that means is that all voters in the city vote to elect all council members and the mayor. And the state of California has a law called the California Voting Rights Act that has been really promoting, um, transitions to by-district elections and a move away from at-large elections. So this ma, this law makes it easier for plaintiff's brings suit against cities. And oftentimes, that has led to very expensive legal challenges and litigation, um, as we've seen in various other cities around the state. Uh, in 2020, the city of San Bruno made the decision to transition to by-district elections by the November 2022 election. And this was a completely voluntary decision intended to decision intended to avoid um any potential legal challenges in the future. So that's why the city is making this change right now to the election system. So, uh, what's happening now is that the council will be adopting a four-district map. The mayor will continue to be directly elected at large. Uh, through this process, we are only creating four districts, and those four districts are to elect one council member from each district. Um, San Bruno does have a ballot initiative passed in nineteen seventy-seven uh that set up the structure of a mayor and four-member city council, and voter approval is required to make changes to that structure. So for now, we are focusing on where should the boundary lines of those four districts be, because of course, San Bruno is not a circle divided into four little pie slices. So we have actually been at work on this process um since uh around August, when our data was released from the US Census Bureau after months of delay. Uh, state law requires that during this transition, the city hold five public hearings. And so tonight, we are at public hearing five. Uh, we have passed through four other uh public hearings as well as two community workshops. So we have seen in San Bruno significant participation from the public, and uh as we are approaching the deadline of April fifteenth, um, that is the deadline for the map to be adopted, and what that does is it gives the county registrar of voters plenty of time to make sure that all voters receive the correct ballots in November. So I'm gonna pass it now to Melanie, uh, and Melanie, just let me know to advance the slides for you.
Great, thank you, Kristen, and good evening, members of the city council. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please. My name is Melanie Moore, and I'm a junior business analyst with, with Tri Pepe Smith, the public affairs and marketing firm partnering with the city and NDC to support communication regarding San Bruno's formation of city council districts. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight to review the outreach and engagement efforts that have been conducted as part of this process, much as information will look familiar to what you have seen in previous hearings, but hopefully it serves as a nice reminder and is also helpful to any members of the public who may be joining this district formation hearing for the first time. Next slide, please. In these next few slides, you can see the various types of media we have employed in our outreach and engagement efforts. As you can see, we've made a point in working with the city to reach out via a variety of different platforms, including digital communications, print media, and in-person outreach to reach San Bruno's diverse community members. In addition to the various platforms, we've also worked with the city to communicate in various languages. Translated materials and interpreters have been provided for outreach elements such as the website, social media flyers, citywide mailer, and virtual community workshop. In addition to the website pictured on the right of this slide, um, with the city, we have sent out emails to news alert subscribers and community-based organizations, posted districting social media approximately every week since September, included districting updates and the city manager newsletter that goes out to over six thousand San Bruno residents, utilized CitiNet platform to highlight the districting process, sent out press releases to online news outlets, and also posted social media news flashes to the city website homepage to keep people up to date. Next slide, please. Um, on this slide, you can see the print media outreach that we have shared with the San Bruno public. On the left is an image of a postcard that was mailed to all postal customers in San Bruno, which encouraged the public to provide feedback on draft maps and let them know a little bit more about the process. Um, some additional print medium, media outreach included um wear workshop and hearing flyers, public notices that were sent out prior to every hearing, and also four press releases sent out to print media outlets. Next slide, please. On this next slide, um, it will touch base on in-person outreach engagement efforts that have occurred. Um, so in conjunction with city, the city and NDC, as Kristen had mentioned before, we have held two community workshops. One was in person and one was virtual. Um, additionally, in January, there was an interactive key ask at the shops at Tambran, which displayed the district formation website, which people could click and look at. And then as well, as you can see on the right of the slide, um, a marquee that showed the district formation website. Um, this marquee was located in El Camino Real, which is near, near the entrance of downtown, so a lot of people could see it. Um, and then also, the city has been connecting with community groups and members by presenting at association meetings such as the Rotary Club, Lions Club, et cetera, and has participated at events such as the Fall Cleanup Day to share information and resources. Final slide, please. And as we just wrap up this quick, brief um outreach update, I wanted to like remind everyone how they can still stay engaged in the process as we move forward. Um, so on the screen, you'll see the website URL, phone number, and email address that is associated with the districting process. Um, and with that, I wanted to say thank you, and I'll turn it back to Kristen to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Melanie, and Melanie will be available for questions at the conclusion of our presentation as well. So map selection. Um, through the website that Melanie just showed, we did have an online mapping tool and a paper mapping tool, and we received uh several maps from the public. As we evaluated those maps, um, we are bound or guided by two main bodies of law, federal law and state law. Quick review of these requirements for district election maps. Federal law requires that each city council district be equal in population size within a certain um amount of permissible deviation. We also must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and we must not draw districts where race is the sole predominant factor. Um, California state law gives us another set of criteria that must be considered uh for our districts. The first is that each district in our map should be contiguous, meaning an entire, each district should be a whole piece with no disconnected parts. Second, we want to minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. And a community of interest is defined under state law as a geographically concentrated population that has common social or economic interests and would benefit from being included within a single council district for purposes of fair and effective representation. Third, we want to create easily identifiable boundaries. So rather than drawing a district boundary um through some lesser-known streets that zigging and zagging, um, to whatever extent we can follow major roads, highways, waterways, and other easily recognizable features, um, those boundaries will be uh easily identifiable by residents. And finally, uh, in order of importance, so this is last in order of importance, but still important, and we're still required to consider it under state law, the district should be compact, meaning that they shouldn't bypass one area uh in order to include another area, if at all possible, right? So if we are doing that in order to comply with the second requirement to keep a community of interest together, then we may draw a district that is somewhat less compact. So we'll refer back to these requirements as we talk about the draft maps. Um, this is a great amount of maps, um, of many of the, the cities that I have been working with throughout this process. Um, I, I don't think any have gotten as many as San Bruno, maybe one other city uh that I've worked with, but we did receive thirty maps from the public submitted either through the online tool or on paper. Um, and of those, a little over half of them met two of our basic requirements for continuity and population balance, or that equal population federal requirement. And then NDC, as your demographer, prepared three additional maps. All of these draft maps are posted and have been available online at the districting website. So as we move forward and select a final map, sometimes questions come up about uh how this districting process could affect the terms of our current council members. And the answer is that there will be no change to any current council members' terms. So um what we think of these, these districts are election districts. So until they are put in place, none of the council members are actually uh by district yet. So this is a process that you can think about as rolling out, um, starting in November twenty twenty-two, when two of the four districts come up for election, and then the other two districts will come up for election in twenty twenty-four. So in a sense, this, this process rolls out, and all of the council members remain at large because they were elected to their current position at large, so for the duration of their current terms. Um, what we'll talk about this evening as well is how we, what options the council has for assigning these four districts to election cycles. And those who are familiar with the city know that, you know, the elections are staggered, so you don't elect all four council members um on the same election cycle, that they are serving their terms in a staggered way. So um that this is not new, it's just that now you are going to be electing them by district. So the map that council identified as, as their preferred map going forward is Public Map one oh four. Um, what some of the things that, that uh led, or some of the things that were discussed around this map were the neighborhoods and communities of interest, particularly um keeping together um the area uh east of El Camino Real was a significant uh thing that we heard from the public and the feedback. Um, and then also keeping together the uh area in this, in this district, one, trying not to divide our neighborhoods there to the extent possible, um, and providing representation to a part of the city that previously uh has not received uh as much representation. So um this map uh is a, a population balanced map. As you can see, all of the districts are contiguous, the boundaries are easily identifiable, and the districts are relatively compact. So from the perspective of NDC, this is a legally compliant map, and uh the total deviation is eight point eight eight percent. Um, it, the District One is the largest district in terms of population, and District Three is the smallest. Um, one thing to point out about this map, and I'll go back so you can see, um, this, that District Four here, that's the blue district, um, you can see that the total population is actually majority Hispanic or Latino. Um, however, when you look at the citizen voting age population, that number does dip under fifty percent down to forty percent. Uh, what this means is that very likely ten years from now, this district may be a majority Latino district, five citizen voting age population, even though it isn't right now. We also have District One uh that, again, is not majority Asian Pacific Islander, but um at forty-five percent of the citizen voting age population. Um, you know, it is, is very possibly uh going to be a, a district that will in the future uh be a majority minority district. So those are a couple of things to point out here. Um, you can also see some information about the housing status, um, and you can see that we do have District Four being uh the only district that, under this plan, Public one oh four, has a majority of renters, so there's some differentiation across the districts here. Um, so the law requires us to provide a proposed election sequence and an alternative election sequence. So it's important for me to say that NDC is not making a recommendation, and that election sequencing is a choice uh that the council will make uh with the adoption of the map. So not only is council adopting a map, the council will be adopting a, an election sequence. Um, and so council will choose which two districts should be up for election this November, and then which two should be up in twenty twenty-four. So um there's really two different ways to set that up, and um they are here. Uh, and there's one I have in purple, and there's one I have in green, uh, and so council can discuss that further, um, but that goes right along with the map. And um sometimes there are council members who reside in the district, um, and it can be ver- that, that is set for election um before their term is going to end or after their term is going to end. And so this chart helps us break down what some of the options are if a council, if the council does choose an election sequence, where for instance, a member whose term is set to uh expire in twenty twenty-two, but there, the district they reside in is slated to not have an election until twenty twenty-four, um, then according to, to this table, we see that that member will finish their current term in twenty twenty-two. Um, and but, and they will have to, you know, wait to come back and run if they want to represent that district in twenty twenty-four, but they won't be able to run as an incumbent, um, because they're all spent two, two years off of council. So um those situations are not necessarily ideal, so this is something to keep in mind. Um, it, it can be much easier to assign uh the district to the, the timeline of the current member that resides in it. Um, though, I do believe this map pairs two, there are two council members in one district. Uh, so this is some of the information that can help council make this decision, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have. It can get very confusing, so if members of the public, if you're not following this, that's totally okay. The main takeaway um is that uh council members will, their terms will not be affected, uh, they'll finish their current terms, and then two districts are gonna come up this November. So back to the preferred map, um, we can also pull this map up on an interactive review map if we want to zoom in on any specific areas uh and see them closer. So with that, um, I will stop my screenshot, and Melanie and I can take your questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, I'll turn to colleagues for questions on the presentation, then we will certainly open it up to the public for public hearing and bring it back to council before further discussion and/or action. Um, colleagues, any questions on the presentation at this time? Okay. With that, why don't we now go ahead and open it uh to the public? This is a public hearing, and this is the um fifth one that we're holding, and you could raise your virtual hand, and we'll have the city clerk um bring you in, please.
The first speaker is John Strazzerino. Just one moment while I bring you in.
Hello, my name is John Strazzerino. I live, I believe, in District Number One, which is Rollingwood. I hope that is correct. Uh, will there in fact be an election for District One in November of twenty twenty-two? And if so, how would I go about submitting my name for consideration? Is that the end of your comment, Mr. Strazzerino? Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, uh, for your comment question. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alany. Just one moment while I bring you in. Hey, Alany, whenever you're ready. Alany, can you hear us? I'm unsure, Mayor, I'm not able to hear anything from Alany.
Hey, Alaney, whenever you're ready. Alaney, can you hear us? I'm unsure, Mayor, I'm not able to hear anything from Alaney.
Okay, um, appreciate that, uh, for trying. We'll see if we have any other members of the uh public that wish to speak. See, the hand went down.
I currently see no other hands raised. However, if anybody would like to speak, um, including Alaney, if you are able to try again, we can try again. Uh, Jeremy Sarnicki.
Hello, council. Great, great. Hey, council, I would just like to make a comment and say that I've been following this process very closely. And during the last public hearing, I did notice a um, a palpable level of discomfort and on part of some of the council members in the scene, the city separated. And I would just like to say I feel that same discomfort that you do. And I wish that um the process unfolding and playing out, San Bruno being split into four districts, does not separate San Bruno, but brings us closer together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alaney. Let's try this again. Hi, Alaney, can you hear us? Alaney, I apologize, but we are unable to hear you if you are speaking.
Why don't we uh try our, the next speaker, and we'll uh go back to Alaney and and see if that's corrected.
Okay, uh Nancy Foreman. Just one moment while I bring you in.
Hi. Um, I just want to say that knowing that districting elections were in the works for a long time, I'm extremely disappointed that the city did not come up with a provision of when two council people are in the same district, of either prolonging one term or shortening another term so that there was equality in running for office. That's all I want to say, and I'm really disappointed in that process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, Alaney's hand went down. So um we, I see no other hands raised from the public.
Thank you, city.
Um, she came back up. Would you like to try again?
Yes, please.
Okay, here we go. All right, Alaney, let's do this.
Can you hear me now?
There you are. See, third time.
Oh, finally. Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, my comment is, um, aside from the redistricting, I want to make sure that we are not isolated to vote just in the district that we are. Because regardless what district we belong to, the other districts affect all of us. This is a small city. It needs to be united, and we can't be isolated in this districting um apparatus that wants to come before us and only vote for that one single person. I feel that all districts have the right and should because all of the members will represent the city as a whole and not isolate it. So I feel that all citizens should be allowed to vote regardless of the district. I'm not sure how that works, but I feel that is what is fair, to keep the city um united and not, you can only vote for this person when District Number One is affecting District Number Two, Three, and Four, and vice versa. So that is something that I want to uh put out there to be understood, that we should all have the opportunity to have a say-so on who is representing us as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I see no other answering.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the city council. Um, we held the public hearing. I'd like to please get action from council to close the, close the public hearing, please.
Go move.
Second. Second. Motion seconded. Salazar Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason? Hi, Mayor Medina?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now we'll bring it back uh to council for further questions. And um as the presenters said, it can be a little confusing. And um we appreciate you knowing that and understanding that. And so maybe we can um help to clear up, you know, there was a uh a question about, you know, can, if if there's two people in a district, why can't one term be shortened, one term be extended as an example? Um, and then I know there was about the iso- uh being isolated just of one district. Maybe we can just um recap on that real quickly um as to why. And then, of course, there was about the Rollingwood. Um, but of course, that will be determined by the council in their selection of this one slide. So could you, could you just um go over a couple of those topics from our, uh, from the folks who had questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for summarizing those questions for us. Uh, so first, these are election districts. And and so um the speaker is correct that now each voter will live in one district and elect one council member. However, you will still have the opportunity, every voter in the city, to elect the mayor. Um, so that is a significant change. And I think uh everyone recognizes how significant that change is uh for the city. Now, with Public Map one oh four, um, there are two council members uh grouped together in District Three. Um, and these are two council members who uh who are on the same uh election cycle. And I I can share my screen there. So there's really no need to extend someone's term or shorten someone's term. Um, I, and and that's not, you know, redistricting does not change, or districting does not change term length. So we're not in the business of changing term length. Um, part of the reason for that is because voters elect their council members to a set term. Um, and it should only be voters to, making the decision uh to to reelect their council members. Those decisions shouldn't be made by boundary lines, right? That, those are the voters' decisions. So all of the council members remain at large until the district in which they reside comes up for election. And so two of those districts will come up for election this November. Um, and then I can share the slide with the two different election sequences again. Um, so we can just reference that. But um because we do have two council members grouped together in District Three under this particular app, um, even that, what that means is that District One does not currently have anyone residing in it. Uh, so that district um does not currently have a council member. So even though we are adopting a four district map, uh, that doesn't mean that we already have, you know, council, a council member in each district. Council members remain at large until that district comes up for election. So there's two different options here. Um, in the purple option, that vacant district, District One, that includes Rollingwood, could come up for election this November. Um, and in the alternative election sequence, District One, that includes Rollingwood and doesn't currently have a council member residing in that district, would come up in twenty twenty-four. Um, so it's really up to council to discuss the pros and cons as to which election sequence makes the most sense for San Bruno. But we're definitely not in the business of uh extending or shortening terms. Uh, are there, is anything I'm missing from the public questions here?
I, I, I believe that you had summarized them, and my colleagues will certainly help me. Um, along, uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
There was, there was one question about how to run, um, and what's, what's the process? And the end, my understanding, and and staff, please correct me, is that that process is is unchanged. Um, in uh, in July-ish is when the the papers become available and you can uh register with the city clerk um to run. I think, I would imagine that the only prince in the process going forward is that you're registering to run in a specific district. Um, and then, um, and then, I believe, the deadline is in, is in August. So um, and and the other part of that question was, you know, it, it is Rollingwood up in twenty twenty-two? And of course, that's a decision that was, hasn't been made yet, but that will be made tonight. Um, I, just while I have the floor, I just want to make one other um comment about um to the, to the, the speaker who was saying about, you know, only being able to um, to, you know, elect one um council member. And it, it's really, really important to reiterate, and this has been said a bunch, a bunch of different times, but I don't think it can be said enough, that this is for electing us. So this is the, the whole point of this process is to make sure that every area of a city has um a, and every, and every community within a, within a city has a a voice to be able to get a, get a representative onto the council. But then, once we're here, once we are on the council, we repres- we still represent the whole city in terms of of, you know, we vote on everything across the whole seat. I can tell you as, you know, residing in District Two, that that doesn't mean that I'm no longer going to care about keeping the streetlights on in Rollingwood, or that I'm no longer going to care about downtown. That's not true. Um, and and I, I think the rest of my, uh, the, the council would, would concur. So I think that that's, is really important to underscore, that this is for the process of forming the council. And then, once the council is formed, we still um are, you know, all responsible for everything across the city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from colleagues? Councilmember Medina?
Um, ye- yes, I wanted to also clarify that, uh, or to restate what Councilman Hamilton said. It, it's, it's, I'm sure all the council feels the same way of of continuing to look out for all of San Bruno. Um, just that this, this district option, it, it's, it's the, it's what we decided to do as a council because um we, we didn't want to fight a lawsuit. And and um I'll stand by that. Um, that there are so many uh cities and school boards that are, that are falling in line to do this. I wanted just to make a really clear, simple clarification for the question regarding um, just why we couldn't prolong or and why uh the terms of getting the council, council members, and why um you could only vote for one person from your district? And and simply, that's the way the law is written, that, that you, you can't shorten or elongate any council member's term. And and the way the law is written, you could only vote for one person in your district as a council member to represent your district. Is, is that summarized rather accurately uh for our consultant?
She's nodding.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason?
So I think from members of the public, can you just clarify what it is that's being voted on tonight? And then uh what the next steps will be, in particular, whether there'll be any future votes on this item?
Thank you. I, I do have uh this slide that I briefly showed. But the next steps for tonight uh is to confirm the selection of Map one oh four for the council to identify the election sequence they wish to proceed with. And then there's the recommended action uh from staff report, is to introduce the ordinance to adopt the map. And then uh there is a second reading uh and a public hearing for the adoption of that ordinance on March twenty-second, um, which, at, at which point uh brings us to the conclusion of this process. The map will be submitted to the county registrar, uh, and we will have completed the process uh prior to the April fifteenth deadline. As for uh any additional votes that could happen on this process, uh, this is, this is the districting process. Anything that happens after this is another separate process. Uh, so if anyone else wants to speak to that, please do.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamilton?
Just one, one clarifying question, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure I know the answer, but I want to be a hundred. Um, there, when we, uh, when we selected Map one oh four um at the last public hearing, um, there was a, there was the possibility that, you know, zooming in on it, that there might be some slight tweaks that would happen. It does not appear that there were any changes at all made. Um, but just, I just want to confirm that. Because if they were, they were really subtle, and I want to know what they are.
That is correct. We did not make any changes. We will make a, if the map is adopted, we will do a final quality control check. Um, but as you can see, the boundaries are very clear. Uh, you know, they, they follow SNEEP, uh, they follow two eighty, three eighty, El Camino, San Riro Ave. Um, they're very clear on, on Map one oh four. So uh no changes have been made since the last time we saw it.
Thank you for confirming that. Thank you.
Thank, thank for asking that, um, because that was stated. And i- the one thing too that was stated, um, which I do uh appreciate and can understand, is that um having districts, you know, I've had many people say, well, you know, um, our city is too small to be having districts. Um, and as we read in the news, whether it's the community college district, whether it's the high school district, whether it's um the city of Millbrae, Belmont, Burlingame, Half Moon Bay, um, Mema Park wouldn't continue to to larger cities like San Mateo, Redwood City. That is what has happened when that letter is received to a city, is they have a very small window in which to respond, which shortens the process and being able to engage the community, uh, the first thing. In addition, there's legal costs. So um it is what is um happening because of what is stated on the, on the Voting Rights Act. But I wanted to mention that. And and the only time that I know that any council, the council here, and I don't mean maybe the current folks that are sitting here, what we're asked is, do you want to extend terms? Because we're required by the state to get on an even year election. And so we either lengthen the term, or we just had it happen when it did. And uh it was a, a close vote, but it was decided to not lengthen the terms because that's not, and the way I voted was that's not what the people had elected at that time. So just for clarity on that. And Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask whether um the, in looking at the map, it includes, um, the District One, I believe, includes um Portola Highlands? So is it, is it possible then that we, um, because I think one of the arguments um is that, you know, it'd be nice to have representation in Rollingwood. But it is possible then that someone could run in Portola and still not have representation in Rollingwood? Is that right?
So um I'm going to pull up the map again. You are correct that District One does include the Portola Highlands. Um, however, whoever's elected from that district will represent all of the neighborhoods in that district. Um, so let me, and and I can leave the map up, or I can show the interactive, whatever you wish. But I'll just quickly uh show that, so that folks know what we're talking about when we say District One. We're talking about the sort of very nor- northwestern part of the city around Skyline Boulevard that does include Rollingwood in the Portola area.
I just want to make sure we're being very clear with the public. Because I think that's been said a number of times, that it'll be nice to have Rollingwood elected, I mean, represented. Um, but it makes it sound like it's just Rollingwood, but you really could have someone from Portola Highlands representing the area. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I'm just a quick question, and I'm looking at District Two, I believe. Anyway, what I'm specifically getting at to where Huntington Avenue is in South El Camino Real, it looks like it's shaded in blue, but then it's, uh, it's got other districts around it. That, that to me looks like a Tampran Shopping Center?
It is, yes, and that is part of District Three under this, under this map.
Okay, thank you, just because of the shade of color, maybe it's my eyes, but.
You're exactly right. Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments from colleagues?
Mr. Chair?
If I could. Councilmember Salazar?
Uh, just a, just an observation, and, and regards to one of the questions from the public in, in terms of, of the ability of, um, of the residents to vote for representatives of all the districts. And I know when the county, uh, before they refined their process, they would vote, um, basically, everyone in the county voted for, for everyone, and they had situations where um, a person would perhaps not be popular in their own district, yet still win. And so um, it, it ended up being a little lopsided, and that led to, to their change, where now uh they are truly elected uh in their district. And so uh, it, it was in that case, it, it proved to be a, a little more, a little more fair. Um, yeah, I was initially unconvinced that San Bruno needed to make the change, uh, but, you know, we um really didn't have a choice, and so we are where we are, and um, you know, it, um, I, I think it will bring some uh change. I mean, I'm, I'm already hearing uh people uh expressing interest in running in, in District One, which has been, uh, I, I think it's been many, many years since anyone from, from that part of town uh was represented on the council. And uh, even though they may be from a different corner of that area, uh, everyone, I, I mean, I, I think more, there's more voters in the uh, in what would be considered uh Rollingwood than there are in, in Portola Highlands, so who, even uh, uh, someone from Portola would have to get the uh, the full support of everyone in Rollingwood to get elected. So um, I, I think it will be a little bit better uh representation, um, and, and hopefully the people there will, will feel that uh their voice is uh, is being heard. Some, some of the reports I've heard from other cities that have adopted uh districts, um, they feel that um some areas that were historically underrepresented finally got some representation, so I'm, I'm hopeful that um, that we'll also see some positive benefit from this in, in San Bruno. So we'll, we'll see, but um, I'm optimistic and looking forward to uh, moving forward with this.
So I'm going off uh memory with the uh next steps, but it was to confirm which would be by action. Uh, the map 104 is the one that is proceeding, which I have displayed on the screen, thank you, good timing, um, that that would be the map that uh, the council had discussed last time. Um, it's also about um introducing the ordinance, but it's also having uh to make a determination tonight as far as which proposed uh or the alternative. There's the proposal and the alternative proposal, um, there you go. So those are, those are two things, and, and I, please feel free, uh, City Manager, Ms. Parks, to um step in at any time, uh, if those are some of the next items that we should just uh solidify or, or discuss.
Vice Mayor?
Yes?
Um, Ms. Parks put up the next step slide for tonight, and then, I, I think we've already ticked off uh the, the first item, which is questions from Councilmembers, and the second item, a public comment, and right now, we are on uh council deliberation and direction. Box number one is confirming the selection of map 104, and then the next is uh selection of the preferred election sequencing, uh, and then followed by uh recommended action. And so, uh, Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll turn it over to you for um, uh, the direction portion, and uh, first item is confirming selection of map 104, and then uh, second item being selecting the preferred election sequencing. And when you get to that item, we can uh bring up these slides uh that had map 104 with the both proposed and alternative uh, both of which are available for the council to choose from tonight.
Thank you very much for, for the Assistant City Manager, appreciate it. Um, so council, where, let's go to the first box is uh, to go down, and is, are we still confirming with map 104? Or, since Councilmember Hamilton wisely asked, there were no modifications from the last time we saw it. Councilmember Medina?
Mute. Sorry, it's opposite. Uh, I am in support of map 104.
Okay, um, I am also in map 104. Councilmember Hamilton?
I support map 104.
Any other colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Salazar?
In favor of 104.
Okay. Anybody else wish to add thoughts? Okay, so I see that we're still at map 104 from the last time. Um, next would be, and maybe like City Manager's suggestion, which I think is a good one, the preference, if we can maybe put that on the screens, or we can um see that, please. Thank you. Any further questions from colleagues on the specifics of the proposed or the alternative sequence from council? Councilmember Salazar?
Can, can we see the slide with the, uh, with the table of the statistics for each one? That one? Okay, and so, looking at this, and uh, I appreciate the staff highlighted the uh, the, where, the areas where the communities of interest are, are prevalent in these. And so, based on this, and being that our intent is to better represent communities of interest, it looks to me like one and four are the two columns, have a highlighted uh number, a bold uh number, and um, just in, in the interest of, of promoting the um, the intent of, of the whole process, it seems like pushing those, those two districts uh forward first would make sense, and I believe those were the, the recommended uh options in uh, in the other slide.
Thank you, other? Thanks. Uh, Councilmember Medina?
Um, this is difficult for me to, to, to do this part. Um, the first one, doing the map was relatively much easier, uh, because the lines were pretty clear. Um, but this, this is very difficult for me, and, and being, being that I'm not someone there in District Three that could potentially not be on the council because of, of what choice we're going to make. I think it is important um that District, District One um does have a, a seat at the table. I, I want to hear from the colleagues that are going to be impacted from it. And it seems logically um, the proposed election sequence is, is um more favorable, but um, I just want to hear from my colleagues on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So um, uh, echoing what Councilmember Medina said, this is, this is the hardest part of the process, and um, I've been deliberating for several days on whether to go, go down deep into the details of what each, each option would look like, um, and I think we owe it to the public to do that. Um, because, you know, there is this, this, the, the, all the arguments that's, that've been made already for the proposed sequence of the purple one on the left, they, they all make sense, and I agree with those, but we, we should also, you know, see, you know, look at what that alternative election sequence would look like if we were to, if we were to adopt it. And um, the, my, my understanding of the way it would work, um, first of all, the, a- as was stated, nobody, nobody gets their term shortened. So what would happen if we were to adopt the um green alternative election sequence is that um District Three and District Four would be up for election. Um, one, one obvious thing right off the bat is that is now, in alternating two-year cycles, the entire east side of town votes, then the entire west side of town votes, which is a little odd, but that, I can get past that. And the, and the way that that would look is, is Councilmember Medina is in um District Four, and would run against, and run against challengers if he chooses to run, and that's how that would work. And, but then in District Three, um, uh, Councilmember Mason's term is up here in twen- in, in 2022, um, Councilmember Salazar's term is not up, but he would either choose to, to run or to not run, um, and electing likely didn't expect to have to, have to run after being elected at the same time Iowa was in 2020. Um, and then um, if he chose not to run, or if, or if he did run and um Linda or someone else prevailed, then he would um serve out the rest of his term. And, and then leave the council in 2024, and, and that's it. And he'd be able to run again in 2026, when that, when that was up again. If Michael were to, Councilmember Salazar were to win, and it were to, like, elect to run in, in 2022, and were to win, then we would end up with one council member short. Because there's still no proof, so now we've got me in number two, we've got Councilmember Salazar in number three, we've got um, uh, Councilmember Medina, or his challenger, or someone else in number four, and nobody in one. And now, we have to appoint somebody to serve out a two-year, to serve out a two-year term. And likely, I mean, it would make sense to put that person into, into, into District One, but it, it, it just seems to go against the whole idea of the process to say that it's really important that we have, everybody have a voice and, and put somebody onto the council, and then right out of, right out of the gate, we're, we're, we're deciding, four of us are deciding who's to represent uh an area of the city, or, or at least be that, or, or at least be that for, that, um, for council member for, for two whole years. So um, the, like I said, this is an incredibly difficult decision, but I, and, and because of that, I thought it was important to kind of walk through what that option looks like in real, in real life. And if I misspoke about any of those options or whatever, staff, I would, would hope that you would jump in and, and correct me on any of that.
No, thank you for, uh, appreciate you um walking through that so that everything's understood, because it is a little confusing and is uh a tough decision to make, but thank you for doing that. Councilmember Salazar?
Uh, Councilmember Hamilton's uh comments triggered a question for me, so in, in the scenario he laid out, where I, both, uh, both I and, and the Vice Mayor were to run in '22 uh for District Three, if that was the one that came up first, um, and then I were successful in getting elected to represent that district, I would leave two years of an out-large seat open. So would then the council decide on, would, would they be filling an out-large seat? Or would they be filling a district seat? I'm just wondering. And, and I haven't really thought about, you know, wh- whether, what I would do in any of these scenarios, I don't think that's really um a, a factor that we're supposed to consider, uh, that they impact a, us individually, but uh, that, that, you know, since the scenario came up, I'm just wondering how that would play out.
I don't know, I'm, I'm glad we're all walking through this and, and, and talking out loud, and I think it's helpful, and Ms. Parks, if you can maybe assist us?
Yeah, I believe uh that the council in that situation would be appointing an at-large member.
Vice Mayor Mason?
So this can get really confusing. Can, can you walk through the four, Ms. Parks, again, the, the options, and then given the conversations that were just had, um, what, what would this play, what would these two options actually play out as?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, we were just talking about the green alternative sequence here, and um, the fact that because two current council members are in District Three, uh, but only one could win an election, that would mean that the four-member council would be uh a three-member council after the 2022 election, if the alternative sequence were adopted. When there are vacancies on the council, uh, for any reason, council up can appoint. And so the question was raised, well, are they appointing someone to at, an at-large seat or a district seat? Uh, and they would be appointing to an at-large seat, because the, the district representation is rolling out, right? And only two districts will be represented um, starting, you know, after the 2022 election. The other two districts will not be represented as districts until after the 2024 election. So um, that was a very a, a astute observation, and I hope that, that what I'm saying is, is on track. I see that City Manager, yeah.
I do want to just ask a point of clarification. The appointment would occur in what year?
City Manager, do you want to jump in here?
City Manager, please.
Sure, thank you, Javon Grogan, City Manager. Uh, let me uh answer that question, and Linda, I, I think I'll, I'll get at your, your, your point. We're talking about the alternative election sequence, and what that calls for is in District Three and District Four to be up for election in '22, and then District One and District uh Two to be up for election in '24. But, but we've been sitting on District Three, so let's just talk about that, and, and hopefully this will make it uh crystal clear. At present, uh, Council uh Member Salazar and Vice Mayor Mason both reside in District Three. If, however, the terms that both Councilmember Salazar and Vice Mayor occupy are different, they're, they're, they're currently sequenced different. And so Vice Mayor Mason uh was elected to a four-year term that ends in '22. Uh, and so um, if we are going a, a, a three-year term, I'm sorry, your, your term ends in, because we shifted our terms, your, your term ends in '22. And so if we are going through this process, and, and please flip back to Slide 19, um, and Vice Mayor Salazar um opts to run in '22 with the alternative, uh, that is possible. Uh, Vice, uh, Councilmember Salazar, who also lives in District Three, uh occupies a at-large term that ends in '24. He has a choice to make uh under the alternative scenario. Uh, will he run in '22? Uh, so let, let's articulate a little bit more on why these choices uh may be made. So Vice Mayor Mason, her term ends in uh '22, if she wants to run again for a uh council seat, uh, she can elect to run uh, uh, in '22, and if re-elected, continue on um for, for a new four-year term. Councilmember Salazar has a choice to make where he can say, you know, my current term expires in '24, I'm gonna uh live out that term, uh, but if he chooses not to run, and whether it's Vice Mayor Mason or someone else wins District Three in '22, someone will win, and if he chooses not to run, it will not be him, he will not have a seat to run in, because the person that was elected in '22 will actually be elected for a four-year term, and that term will not expire until '26. And so that's why this decision on, uh, I think we're having this conversation about uh, is, is District Three included in the uh, in, on '22, or is it included um to be uh up for election in? up for election in twenty-four, uh, is, is being talked about. Alternatively, in the proposed election sequence, that, that's what's shown in, in purple, District Three, uh, where both Vice Mayor Mason and Councilmember Salazar currently reside, would be up in twenty-four. Under that proposed, uh, election sequence, that means that Vice Mayor Mason, whose term right now ends in twenty-two, would not have a seat, a, a council seat to run in. Vice Mayor Mason makes use to run in, in the mayoral election, which is up every two years, and there'll be a mayoral race in twenty-two and twenty-four. But under the proposed election sequence, uh, because the decision will be to have District Three up for election in twenty-four, when Vice Mayor Mason's term ends in twenty-two, there will not be a, uh, district seat for her to run in unless she, uh, moved to another district, or in this case, moved to District One or District Four. And Councilmember Salazar, who is currently occupying a at-large seat that expires in twenty-four, uh, can at that time choose to, to, to run twenty-four, um, to continue on or choose not to run. But that, for the public, that is why, uh, I think this issue, uh, was, was asked to be highlighted, uh, because we do have two council members, uh, that, that reside within District Three. And, uh, as was said before, um, making a decision solely based on where current council members reside, uh, is not advisable and should not be done. Uh, but it is important, uh, that there is, um, clear and transparent articulation of the implications of this decision. Uh, and we certainly want to make sure that, uh, if there are any questions, uh, from council on how either, uh, the proposed election sequence or the alternative election sequence will work, uh, vis-à-vis, um, current, uh, council members, um, uh, districts, we want to answer those questions. And I know that's the spirit in which we're, we're having this discussion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think, um, Mayor Medina piqued my interest around the, the shifting over to the, um, in-year elections. So traditionally, terms, have they, have they been always four years, from the recollection of everybody who's been here for a while? Yes, okay. So they, so this is, this was really the, when I ran, it was a three-year term solely because of that shift to even-year elections. Okay, got you. Okay. So, so I would just say, I think I am the most impacted of everybody here, so I actually do not feel comfortable voting on this item, even though I know I could be a swing vote, um, but just because it, it will benefit me, um, depending on where I choose to run for any office, um, I just don't feel that it's right for me to, um, to vote on this item. And so just for anybody from the public who, who may be listening, um, one is obviously vacancy based on the proposed election sequence. Um, District Four, Mr. Medina would be running anyway because his term is, is essentially up. And would also be running under the alternate sequence. Hamilton is up in twenty twenty-four, so under the proposed and the alternate, alternative, alternative, he'd still be running, uh, if he chooses to run, I could say. But under District Three, under the proposed election sequence, um, I would be running, and Salazar, assuming we both run. But the benefit to this particular proposal is that then I wouldn't need to run if I choose to run for election this year, and would essentially be almost grandfathered in the additional two years. And so, uh, for any members of the public watching, I just think it's important to understand why I don't feel comfortable voting, I mean, voting in this particular, or, um, area, because essentially, there would be, um, no election for District Three until two thousand twenty-four, when my term would otherwise be up this year. So, um, so I do appreciate the, the thoughtfulness being taken, um, and the consideration from the council members that have spoken so far, but just wanted to express why I feel uncomfortable in this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I, I wanna, and City Manager, if you could assist me, um, I want to walk through this. If the proposed election sequence were to be decided, there is an election in twenty twenty-two. It is for three members of the council, the mayor and two members of City Council, Mr. Medina and Vice Mayor Mason. And so by going to that, I just want to make sure, because I think what I heard from the Vice Mayor was, well, that would extend the, her current term by two years, and that would not occur.
That's not correct.
No, I understand, but I don't know if that's what I heard, that, that she thought, and I want to make sure that we're all, um, on, on that, just in case I, I misunderstood.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think it's important, uh, to back up a little bit before we go forward, so certainly want to address that. It's important to, uh, note proposed election sequence. State law requires that when this process comes before you, that, uh, you are provided with a proposed election sequence. It's also important to note that staff, uh, did not select that proposed election sequence, that was selected by, uh, your demographic consultant, NDC. It's also thirdly important to note that either option, the proposed or the alternative, are legitimate legally appropriate decisions that the City Council can make, and the City Council is open, uh, to choose the proposed or the alternative. Just want to provide that background. Let's talk about the proposed election sequence in twenty-two, where you would have District One that is currently vacant because there is no one that resides in that district, uh, and then District Four that currently, um, um, the council member Marty Medina resides in. Important note, anyone can run in those districts, it's just not the incumbent, um, of, of council member Marty Medina. So anyone can run that resides in that, in that district that meets the other election, um, uh, or office criteria. An important point. With the proposed election sequence, what we're talking about is, because Vice Mayor Mason's term, uh, ends in twenty-two, if the proposed election sequence is chosen, the Vice Mayor, uh, will not have a district to run in. And so if she, if she chooses not to run for the other council's, uh, seat that'll be up in twenty-two, which is the mayor's spot, um, she will not have a district to run in. And so, um, uh, she will not have a district to run in until twenty-four, uh, because that election sequence was chosen for District Three not to be up for, um, election until twenty-four. Councilmember Salazar, who resides in District Three, uh, his term expires in twenty-four, he will not be affected by that decision, uh, in the sense that his term, uh, now expires in twenty-four, and in twenty-four, uh, that, uh, district will be up for reelection, and so he can run if he chooses to run, and, um, if he wins, have another four-year term. In the alternative, and so whether in the proposed election sequence or the alternative election sequence, no one's term is extended. That is not allowed. We are not extending anyone's term. In the alternative election sequence, again, just by the very nature of where council members currently reside and drawing map one oh four, and we actually do not know who drew map one oh four, because it was submitted online anonymously, right? But in map one oh four, that has been selected due to the boundaries and the percentage of deviation and how it divides the, the, the city into four, uh, parts, you have two council members that reside in District Three, Council Vice Mayor Mason and Councilmember Salazar. Again, uh, with the alternative election sequence, because the Vice Mayor's term ends in twenty-two, should she choose to run again for a council seat? She has that option because that district will be up for reelection. Councilmember Salazar also has a decision to make, um, is, does he want to run in twenty-two to, uh, uh, ensure that, um, uh, if he wants to continue past twenty-four, he can do so, um, uh, as a district council person. Uh, or he can choose not to run, and his term will not be extended, but his term, uh, will expire in twenty-four, because that's how he was elected to, um, uh, to, to his seat with a term that expires in twenty-four. Um, and then, again, uh, with, uh, the alternative scenario in twenty-four, then District One is up for, um, uh, election, and then District Two, which currently has Councilmember Hamilton, but again, anyone, uh, may run from that district. I think the only other thing that we talked about here tonight, uh, that I had not said in this recap, is that in the event that the alternative election sequence is chosen, and let's say Councilmember Salazar, uh, wins for District Three, that means that his current seat, that is an at-large seat that expires in twenty-four, will be vacant, and so there'll be this, that two-year seat that the City Council will, uh, need to appoint someone to serve for, for two years. And that decision of the City Council, it is an at-large seat, so they are not constrained by appointing someone from a particular district, and so the council would have the option to appoint someone who resides in District One, District Two, District Three, or District Four. And, uh, but, like, again, both the proposed and the alternative are legitimate options for the City Council to consider, and, um, that, that is what we're discussing tonight. I, I hope I've addressed all those points, I'm happy to recap anything.
Yeah. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you for, uh, doing that. Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
I, I just wanted to, to throw in a, another possible scenario, so we decided to go with District Three first. Both the Vice Mayor and I both run for mayor, um, one of us wins, and now there are, um, well, I, I guess, if I were to win, there'd be two openings, if the Vice Mayor were to win, there'd be one opening, so there's another scenario where, uh, that, that could play out. But, again, you know, we, we can't really consider, uh, what, uh, you know, what, what happens to, to each of us, so, um, in, in the interest of, uh, I, I was just, you know, thinking of all possible scenarios, since we were, we were king out some ideas, so, uh, not, not completely unrealistic.
Any other comments or questions? Hold on, I need to switch somebody. Can, um, Councilmember Medina be switched to a panelist, please? And Vice Mayor.
I, I'm not sure, is there, uh, will, will there be public comment on this particular item, or should there be? I don't know that there is any, but I'm just curious.
Uh, we had the public hearing, um, which we had closed, we'd have to reopen the public hearing, if that were the case, unless I'm, um, unless the city attorney has something different than, it's, I know.
That's correct, that's correct, because now the public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton.
Uh, you know, given that, you know, we really got into the meat of this particular part of the discussion, now, since the public hearing would be closed, I would be supportive of reopening public hearing, just to make sure that, that the public has a chance to weigh in before we make this, this part of the decision. So, that's my thought.
City Attorney, I guess it doesn't preclude us, correct?
That is correct. You can reopen the public hearing and take any additional public comment.
So, i- i- in that case-
Why don't we go ahead and just do it so it's formal, since we took a formal action, I would ask that the, um, I see your hand, so I'll let you go.
I will, I, I make a motion to reopen public hearing on this item.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Yes, aye. So what I would ask, this is specifically into the, uh, for public comment, this is into the, um, not about map one oh four, because we're kind of, but to the preferred sequence, right? You know, that was the purple and the green. So remember to the public, um, please, uh, go ahead and raise your hand, and, um, the city clerk will assist us and, and, um, call you into the room.
Our speaker is John Strazzerino.
Thank you very much. Can you pull up the, um, proposed and the alternative again?
Mr. Strazzerino is at the end of your comment?
No, it's not. Can you pull up the map so I can comment on it?
Okay, what, what it is, is the timer's there too, so I'm not sure about, uh, what can, uh, be done, so, um-
Okay, well, according to the alternative, in twenty twenty-two, both, um, Salazar and Mason are up for reelection, but doesn't Mr. Salazar's term go until twenty twenty-four? Why does he need to run again? Because isn't his term up until twenty twenty-four? That is my question. End.
Thank you for your, uh, comment. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jeremy Sernicki.
Hello, guys. So I was not expecting the rare double public, public comment, uh, so all of these are going to be unprepared comments. I would first like to commend all of the council members, um, I think they acted with magnanimity in, uh, how they approached this decision where some of their own, uh, terms will be affected. Um, I think it's quite clear that I intend to run for, uh, San Bruno City Council member in twenty twenty-two, to represent the neighborhood that I grew up in, Rollingwood, I'm close to my entire life. I do think it's, um, it needs to be said that, uh, the city, while this might be an awkward process, while it might be something that, um, a great deal of the citizens do not want, it is state law, and we should support the city complying with state law. I haven't heard that yet, and I think that is, uh, very important to state. I think this is a, a, a monumental moment in human history. We are dealing with a closing window of time where we can prevent irreversible damage from occurring to our environment, to our way of life. I appreciate all of the care and effort that the San Bruno City Council has put into making sure that we have adequate resources and city services. But there needs to be a point where we take bold action to deliver a sustainable future where we will all pay the price. And that moment in time is now. I would like to build a better world, to bring a better future and a vision for San Bruno that helps everybody, that doesn't bring a sustainable future at the price of ten dollars a gallon, taking two lanes out of the highway so that less people are driving on the roads and are forced into a crumbling public infrastructure. I would like to represent everybody, and it is my dream to represent Rollingwood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Not seeing any other speakers at this time, just wanted to, this will be the last opportunity for folks. I'm just looking again. Okay? I'm not seeing any, uh, additional hands, so, um, I'd like to come back to council to close, uh, this round of the public hearing.
Through the chair, I'll make that motion.
Motion is your second?
Second.
Motion seconded, Salazar, Hamilton, to close public hearing. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, now it's back to council on, uh, oh, I'm sorry, City Manager, please. please.
Yeah. Just want to clarify one point that was made earlier. When we discussed the ability for the City Council to appoint a council member, if, for example, Councilmember Salazar's seat is vacated in twenty-two, just want to note that the City Council will have the decision to appoint or call a special election. Just want to clarify that. I know it's not germane on the decision that's being made, but I did want to let it be known that that other option would be available at that point as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. Absolutely correct. Thank you. So we're back to council, and Councilmember Salazar, was your hand up from the close of public hearing, or?
No, I raised it again because if it's okay, I'd like to address the question that came from the public about my term.
Oh, please.
And I just needed to clarify that. In this next election cycle, I could choose to do nothing, and my term would continue for another two years. Or if I were interested in extending my time, I could run half-cycle for the district seat this year, and then my term would go not till twenty-four, but till twenty-six. And so that would be an option I would have to make, whether to abandon the end of my current term and pursue a new longer term, or just ride it out and then sail into the sunset in 2024.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that was a question specifically asked, so thank you. And I didn't like, like we've said, it's kind of better just to get all those questions answered, so folks go away with this meeting, at least knowing where, what we're doing and the direction that the community is going. All right, so we've done with...
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
I was going to ask, would it be possible, I know that the options were presented to us in district pairs, but would it be possible for us to say, to vote on one district and maybe have, you know, unanimous direction on at least one of them, and then maybe debate the benefits of which other district accompanies that district? And being that we have one that's unoccupied, that might be, you know, an easy choice, perhaps, and then we decide? Because I don't think we're bound by the pairs that were presented. We could actually select any pair to go first. Or am I mistaken in that? We could go one, two, one, three, one, four?
The City Manager, Ms. Parks?
Yeah, you could, but it would be traditionally, if there is a one council member residing in a district, that district is assigned to the year that that one council member's term ends, right? So for example, under this plan, Councilmember Hamilton lives in District Two, and his term is set to expire in 2024. Traditionally, we would always recommend that that district be cycled to 2024 and not 2022. Even though Councilmember Hamilton could serve out, you know, would continue to serve out an at-large term until 2024.
Or he could take the same option that I would if I chose to run. I'm just...
Yeah, so you're correct that you could choose any combination that you want, but traditionally, that is the way that we make these recommendations. And so...
Okay. So I'll just...
I know you're wanting to make it even more complicated than it already is.
Right. Okay. No, I just thought maybe if there was a way to move at least a little bit forward on this, I'm just offering an option.
City Manager?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Parks. Councilmember Salazar, what I interpreted your question as, is the slide nineteen, and if we can bring that back up, showed the districts in pairs. And your question was, can we still make a sequencing decision, but first vote on one district that would be up for election in twenty-two versus voting on them as pairs as shown here? The answer to that, that I believe is yes, because what you're required to do in this process is to adopt a sequencing. And so at the end of the process, you need to know what two districts are going to be up in twenty-two and what two districts are going to be up in twenty-four. But how you arrive at that, if you want to take one district at a time, that is totally up to the City Council. And I think that's a specific answer to your question. What Ms. Parks opined on is what is typical, which is an option for the City Council. But again, either of these options or some combination is completely valid and a decision that you're able to make tonight.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, the, yes, in reality, there's really only one other option that's not up here, and that would be the pairs of one, three, and two, four, just by math. When you've got four and you're picking two, you're going to have three combos. So it would just be a matter of which ones would go. And in the scenario where it's, where you're picking two, four, that pair would have to go in 2022 because, at least I believe so, because Councilmember Medina is in District Four and is up in twenty-two. So this would have to go in twenty-two if we were to do a one, three, two, four hearing. Throw in those facts out there. At least I hope they're right.
Through the mayor, I just want to clarify. Councilmember Hamilton, what you said is the pair of one in twenty-two having District One and District Four, I'm sorry, and twenty-four, for example, having, let me say it a different way. What I heard you say is that District Four would have to be up in twenty-two because Councilmember Medina's term expires in twenty-two. I just want to clarify that that's not necessarily the case. Just similar to where Vice Mayor Mason's term would be up in twenty-two, that doesn't mean that necessarily the district that she resides in has to be up in twenty-two, right? So I just wanted to clarify that point. Got a little mixed up on pairs, but, okay. Thank you.
We got through the map, well. There's a lot of various scenarios, obviously, and so I know this is not easy. What are my colleagues wishing to do as far as us trying to get down this path a little bit more? We've heard from the Vice Mayor, totally respect her comments, and so we'll leave that. But I didn't know if there's any other feedback from any of the colleagues, Something that I'm trying to, and I'm just maybe not doing it fast enough, I was trying to think of the various things that Councilmember Hamilton said, and I was thinking like, okay, if you have it here and here, could you potentially have too many members of the council? But now I'm looking at the math again, and I'm thinking, not. Okay. That was just me not clicking fast enough on that. Okay.
So I guess, oh, go ahead, Marty. I didn't put my hand up, you did, so. Yeah, I apologize. I had to pick up my son at baseball practice really quick, but I'm back, and I listened to it all, and it doesn't make it any easier. The easy thing for me is that, you know, it doesn't matter who District Four is paired with. There's an election coming up, and I see this up. It's a terrible choice for those that are in District Three. Why should somebody have to run after running two years ago? And then the other side of that is, why should somebody not be allowed to run because of where they live? That's what we're facing right now. I do not want to appoint a council member. That's, I don't believe in that. I think we should be looking at ways to fulfill the spirit of the law. So I'm leaning towards having District One and District Four being up in 2022. I just have a hard time voting that way, but it makes the most sense and the direct way of complying with the spirit of law. I would, through the mayor, I would very reluctantly concur with that. For all those same reasons that Councilmember Medina just spoke to, also the fact that in the alternative sequence, the entire east side of town votes in one election, and then two years later, the entire west side of town votes. That's odd. And I don't like the idea of potentially having to appoint someone to the council, although we were told that we would have the option for a special election, which would be costly. And it would also prolong the time for District One, the residents of Rollingwood, Pacific Heights, and Portola, getting representation on the council by two additional years. So I'll reluctantly back the proposed election sequence, the purple one on the left.
Yeah, this, having to appoint is something I had not, not a lot of thought to, in addition to, or if we, as a council, decided not to, and then it went to a special election, and that would not be cheap. So that is the concern. Neither side, I think, is completely fair. But addition has to be made, and based on some of the colleagues' comments, I might be leaning toward the proposed as well at this time, unless I can be convinced. But I'm just, I'm trying to go through my head quickly as far as the various options and what have you, and I just think that maybe that might be the option at this time. Any other feedback from colleagues? All right. If there is no further comment from anyone, it is an action item, which would be to waive the first reading, would be the first action, and then to introduce an ordinance to adopt a district map and amend the municipal code, chapter two point three, two point oh one oh, for the general municipal code. So can I just further ask a question? So in the alternative election sequence, okay, I see what they're saying. All right. Okay, there's no other comment. I can see myself going back and forth a little bit here. Mr. Hamilton?
So the recommended action is just for adopting the map. I believe, and staff can confirm, that the selection of the preferred election sequencing is a direction. So we just need to provide clear direction there. And I think it should be very clear what direction we provide for that. So I think that needs to, that box needs to get checked.
I think that box has been checked. That box has been checked, and now we go to the third box that we said.
Okay. I didn't hear, I didn't hear that actually said, that, okay, we have to vote for the proposed. Sorry.
I think at this time, I mean, I could go either, because I think there's pros and cons to either of them. I think this is difficult, but that would be my decision myself. And I didn't hear any other colleagues that had input. I heard something in the beginning, but I don't want to add comments to anybody else that they're able to go ahead on. So with that, we do have an action, but it is to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance for a district map. Is there any action by council?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to adopt a district map and amend municipal code, chapter two point three, two point zero, ten, general municipal elections.
So first we'll go, is there a second on waiving the first reading?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made in second to waive the first reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. And then there was an introduction of the ordinance by Councilmember Salazar. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Salazar. Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with Vice Mayor Mason opposed.
And do you find, Mr. Mayor, uncomfortable as it may be, I think that we really do need a motion on the preferred election sequencing. As maybe others did, heard there was a majority for that, but I think we need to get that clear for the record.
Okay. Thank you for chiming in, and so is there on the sequence, preferred election sequence, is there action by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the preferred election sequence.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, and roll call, please.
And just to clarify, Mayor, that is for the proposed sequence that was presented tonight?
Yes, in the purple, just to be clear. Okay.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Abstained.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero to one with Vice Mayor Mason abstained.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I know it's, there was a lot, and thank you to staff and to the consultants through this whole process. I know we're not completely done, but thank you for all your time tonight. What I'd like to do...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment. I don't know how else to say it. This was an extraordinarily difficult decision. The consequence of just, there was no real great outcome. Nothing in this is really fair. And I just wanted to understand, or let our Vice Mayor understand how difficult that was. So that's it.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. What I'd like to do is go back to public comments for items that were not on the agenda, because as you know, we had to pause to go to the public hearing by required seven-tenth start. So at this time, we're going to go back to comments for items not on the agenda and see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on items not needed. And if City Clerk can assist, I would appreciate it.
Yes. Jeremy Sernicki?
Hello, council. Thank you. You know, I actually, I want to begin by saying that I would like to commend as well the City Manager, because anyone who has to explain to a member of the public, a layperson, what the transition to district elections means, that the city will be partitioned into four districts of approximately equal population, which will each vote for their own council that the city will be partitioned into four districts of approximately equal population, which will each vote for their own council member separately, the four-year term, et cetera. Anyone that has to explain that to a member of the public in a fluent and cohesive manner gets my respect, as does this council, who, their action tonight greatly impacted their political careers. But I would like you to know that I am fighting for the future of this generation, our children, and everybody in San Bruno, everybody across the world. We have no option but to act. And I will not stand for anything but bold action that gets us to a better future. And if you are with me on that journey, then I will stand with you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, is there any other public comment tonight?
I see no other hands raised.
And, uh, colleagues and, and, um, staff, what I'd like to do is I'd like to get through the announcements and presentations. I'd like to take a short break, uh, before we enter consent calendar, if that's okay. So with that said, uh, announcements and presentations. Item A, presentation of a community grant check to the San Bruno City Council for the drug education program to be run by the San Bruno Police Department from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And we will have our president of the San Bruno Community Foundation. I will turn, um, uh, very proudly to turn over the meeting to you.
Thank you and good evening, city council members and public. It is great to see you all again and share space on behalf of our community. Again, my name is Melissa Natania Jones, and I have the distinct honor of serving as the board president for the San Bruno Community Foundation. Tonight, I'm thrilled to present two grant checks to the city of San Bruno. One to support a drug education program by the San Bruno Police Department, and another to fund the purchase of COVID-19 rapid antigen test to support San Bruno first responders when making calls in the community. As many of you may know, the foundation was created, uh, created the community grants fund in order to share some of the restitution funds with local organizations, including the city of San Bruno, that form the lifeblood of the community of San Bruno. The city of San Bruno applied for a grant, a community grant last fall and was selected from a competitive pool of grant applications that were received by the program September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one deadline. A review panel of volunteers, including community members and individuals with grant-making and nonprofit experience, reviewed and evaluated applications, ultimately recommending, recommending that the board approve grants to the twenty-three projects. The San Bruno Community Foundation board approved twenty-three grants totaling three hundred thousand dollars on December first of twenty-twenty-one. We continue to be thrilled that YouTube and Google dot org have partnered with the foundation on the community grants fund for the fifth year and have provided one hundred thousand dollars of the grant funds being distributed. Hope you all can see that. On behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation today, I'm pleased to present the city of San Bruno with a grant check totaling fifteen thousand to reduce the negative impacts of drugs on families by educating San Bruno children and parents on established and emerging drugs and drug use. We applaud the continued efforts of the San Bruno Police Department to educate our children and parents about the dangers of drugs in our community. I understand the council was recently briefed by Police Chief Ryan Johannesen on what this program will involve. We are grateful for this opportunity to support the San Bruno Police Department's commitment to San Bruno families and its partnerships with our local schools. The foundation is also proud to support the city's effort to serve the San Bruno community in the midst of the continuing COVID-19 pandemic. On behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation, I'm pleased to present the city of San Bruno with a grant check totaling ten thousand dollars to fund the purchase of the COVID-19 rapid antigen test to assist San Bruno first responders in identifying patients with COVID-19 when responding to calls in the community. Just to clarify, this grant was awarded at the beginning of February in the midst of the Omicron surge in San Bruno and the broader Bay Area. Since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, first responders have struggled with determining whether a patient who exhibited flu-like symptoms should be transported to a local hospital or convalescent home. With this grant, San Bruno Fire Department crews are equipped with rapid antigen test kits that allow a patient to be tested on the scene of a nine-one-one call, enabling first responders and the patient to make better informed decisions and not necessarily, and not unnecessarily burden transport ambulances and local emergency rooms. These test kits also have been available to others that live in the same household to reduce the potential spread of COVID-19. The foundation appreciates the opportunity to partner with the city on this effort to support first responders and community members who face challenging circumstances, particularly in the face of highly contagious Omicron variant and its consistency with the foundation's commitment to supporting the community through the pandemic. This is the seventh COVID relief grant that we have awarded since twenty-twenty, and our COVID relief investments have totaled seven hundred and seventy-six, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Both of these grants are meaningful to the foundation, and we're happy to support these efforts in the spirit of collaboration to serve the residents of San Bruno. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the good news of both these grants supporting the police and fire departments.
Now, we want to, um, thank you, I see our police chief is in the, in the room, but, uh, wanted to thank you and the board, um, for this. And just so we, for all that you've done and the differences this will make, I also wanted just to take back to the board and staff that on the twenty-eighth, I went to an event in South City. And, uh, it was the Economic Advancement Center to show what the board has been doing. And this young man, Walter, came up to me, who was employed there, and wanted to introduce himself and say that he was one of the recipients of the fellowship. And that it enabled him to go from CSM to get his, uh, bachelor's degree, and he was the first one in his family to receive a college degree. And it's those type of things, and now he's, he's there helping individuals to get situated and, and, and further their past. So, uh, what this, uh, community foundation does consistently is helping out in many ways. And so it was just another example that please, um, you know, it does make a difference, and it will make a difference. So on, on behalf of the, um, council here and behalf of the city staff, we appreciate, uh, you being here, thank you for your patience. But, uh, we, um, appreciate the virtual checks, um, that I'm sure will be taken care of at a, at a future time, so thank you again.
My pleasure.
And with that, we wish you the, uh, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will move on to item B, recognition of March as, uh, National Women's History Month. I have a proclamation, and I won't read all the whereas', but I would like to, to read some. Uh, whereas American women have served in our military, yet despite these contributions, the role of the American woman in history has been consistently overlooked and under, uh, um, undervalued. In literature, teachings, study of the American history, and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights, suffrage, and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement, the emancipation movement, the individual labor movement, and the civil rights movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas honor of Women's History Month, the city of San Bruno wishes to convey our thanks and appreciation to all women that have added to and made a difference in our community and county through their contributions and efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim March as National Women's History Month and encourage all residents and visitors alike to join us in celebrating this special month. And we will move on to item C. We have an announcement from our city attorney, uh, Mark Zaffrono, and I will turn, uh, the meeting over to him.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Really just a brief announcement, um, for the benefit of the public, that I informed the city council, uh, late last month that I'll be retiring this year. I'll still be working for a bit longer, and, uh, as all of you step through the number of close sessions that you've already had and will continue to have, to select a new city attorney, both on an interim basis and on a permanent basis. So certainly wish everybody the, the best of luck in that process, always happy to assist. And I just wanted to make a, a public announcement of that, so folks, uh, knew what was going on. So thank you very much, I really appreciate the, the time tonight, it's a late meeting. Um, and thanks, thanks for indulging me for just a moment.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate you, uh, making the announcement, uh, during, during this, this meeting. And, uh, once again, we wish you, all of us, as we've shared with you, wish you the very best to you and your family in, in retirement. With that, I would like to, uh, it's nine oh five, I'd like to take a, about a ten-minute break, so that we can, uh, stretch our legs, and then we will come back and move on to our consent calendar, item number seven. item number seven. This meeting will be in recess.
Sorry, I'm late back.
No, I think everybody did good. Okay, city clerk?
I'll get the garbage truck for the Lions Cup.
City clerk, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. All right, let's call back into session the San Bruno City Council meeting of March the 8th. And we are now under item seven, which is consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Are there any items that folks want to have removed for a separate vote? Okay, are there items that we had comments or questions on, Councilor Medina?
Seven F as in Frank and G as in George.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
I have the same two, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional ones? Seeing none, let's take those in order. We're going to go to item F, as in Frank, adopt the resolution declaring the continued state of local emergency and the need for the council and other legislative bodies subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act to continue to teleconference in order to ensure the health and safety of the public to AB Assembly Bill 361. Councilor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did submit this question in advance to staff. Try to do that whenever possible, time permits. And basically, the question is, with COVID fortunately waning and things getting a little bit back to normal, the question is, when are we going to talk about returning to in-person meetings or hybrid of those meetings? When will we have that discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. I was thinking we were going to have it under council policies and procedures, but I see the city managers coming up. We didn't have that meeting and I know that state legislation is, that will start to expire at some point. City manager, please.
Absolutely. Javon Groban, city manager. Two questions. When will we be ready to transition to hybrid meetings and when are we going to have the discussion? So that discussion is planned for when we return to discuss policies and procedures with the city council. We're still polling or finding the date for that meeting. However, council already provided direction to ensure that we have hybrid meetings and provided the funding. And so there's an active capital project going on right now, Senior Center, to install additional monitors and technology so that we can have high-definition hybrid meetings. And I know the public will remember that pre-COVID, when we would telecast from the senior center, it was hard to see the graphics on the screen and that was because we were televising at standard definition. And so we have an active capital improvement project to install high-definition cameras and other technology that will give us the ability to maintain this hybrid setup where people can attend remotely and in the future, attend in person with the city council. We are anticipating that work to be completed around May 9th. Let's give or take because we know we have supply chain issues. So if we need a part, it may be hard to get. But we do have everything we need in stock and so we do anticipate making that date.
Sorry. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Okay, let's move on to item G. Adopt the resolution approving the design, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with JMB Construction, Inc., before the Avenue 3-1 Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project in the, not to the, well, there's quite a bit of ribbage. I'll turn it over to the, to Councilor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a big project for us, approaching nearly $12 million. And I thought that, you know, I know that the public is always concerned about what's happening in their neighborhoods. I know there will be a meeting in the neighborhood that this will affect. However, I think it's important for our community to hear a little bit more than this item on the consent agenda, it being $12 million in water and sewer. It will pave the streets in the area. It will put curb ramps in the area that are ADA compliant. So I'm pulling this so that staff could actually, it's showing that things are getting done in the city. It takes time, but I thought it was appropriate to hear from staff on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, we're inviting Matthew Lee, our Public Works Director, to give a brief overview of the project.
Director Lee, good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and the members of council. I'm going to share a screen really quick, start PowerPoint slide, give me one second. Hopefully, everybody sees the PowerPoint slide. Perfect. So my name is Matt Lee, I'm the Public Works Director with San Bruno and I'm going to be talking to you and giving a brief overview about Avenue 3-1 Sewer and Water Replacement Project. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this project. We approved, or we went to the last council and asked for approval for Avenue 2-1 and this is a very similar project in that sense. When people look at the numbers in terms of 3-1 and everything else, it's a little confusing and people sometimes ask where they are. We're going to kind of talk about it a little bit in this, on this project. First, I'm going to go into the background of the project, talk about the scope and then the project location, actually where 3-1 actually is. And then the construction impact mitigations, the measures that we've taken based on the new temporary use permit, temporary fencing standards. And then what the staff recommendation is and then I'll be open to any questions. A little background, the Avenue 3-1 project is a combination of a variety of projects like Councilmember Medina said. It's a combination of the Avenue 3-1 Sewer Main Replacement Projects and the Avenue 3-1 Water Main Replacement Project. The purpose of these projects are to reduce the risk of sanitary sewer overflow and to improve the reliability of the water system. And, you know, in terms of trying to reduce impacts to the neighborhoods during construction, we also include paving after the water and sewer line replacements are put in place along with any AA curb ramp upgrades that are required. The project itself has a variety of water and sewer line replacement. There's approximately 7,000 feet of water line replacements and approximately 6,000 feet of sewer line replacements and pavement rehabilitation. In terms of the location of where 3-1 is, if you take a look on this map, the orange border kind of highlights the area 3-1. It's along El Camino and bordered by the other streets. If you look on the map, the water lines are the ones in blue that will be replaced and the sewer lines are the ones in green that will be replaced. We're also doing some minor storm drain improvements as well. And all those streets where we're having utility replacements, there will be paving of streets. Reduce construction impacts, what we're looking at doing is making sure that the staging areas are kept clean and that they're fenced off and if there are items being stored in the streets, that they are moved every few days. The implementation of this additional requirement is at a cost of approximately about $100,000 to ensure that we minimize the impacts to the neighborhood during this large construction project. Like Mayor Medina said, there's a lot of words, but the resolution that we're requesting of council is to essentially approve the designs, authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract for roughly $9 million and then to approve various material testing, construction management and design support services for construction and to approve the contingency for the project and approve the total project budget of $12 million. With that, I'm available for any questions that anybody may have.
Any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Medina?
So one, and it could have been in the staff report and I may have missed it. So can you confirm, are we leaving the old pipes in the ground or leave some of them for potentially running fiber as we've done in other neighborhoods?
You're stating leaving the sewer pipes in the ground?
No, the water.
Water pipes?
I believe in the, on the last project, that was something that we did. Rather than take them up, leave them there so that if we were ever wanting to run fiber in those neighborhoods, we would have it already ready to go and we can pull it.
Yeah, I'll have to follow up for these case, right away sometimes it's a little tight in the area and so we'll have to check and I can get back to you that.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more of a comment. I was glad to see all the details in the staff report regarding cleanup and storage of materials and all of that. The project is of course going to cause inconvenience in those neighborhoods, it's unavoidable, but there are reasonable steps that the project crew can take to be good neighbors and I'm glad that we're going to be following all that from the outset. I did notice that the cost of that was put out separately in the, in the cost breakdown, which I thought was a little bit odd because it makes it seem like we're paying extra for that when it seems like it should be part of the way that things just work. But that's, those are my only comments and I'm excited for this project. And I agree with, and I agree with what Councilmember Medina said earlier. You know, this is a, this is a really big project and two of us on the, two of us up here weren't even on the council when this project was approved. So I'm glad that we're talking about it rather than just approving it on consent. Thank you.
Councilor Medina?
Yes, thank you for the answers and I did submit these questions. And I do find it, as Councilman Hamilton said, it was rather odd that something that typically is just included is pulled out and put as a bid. Mobilization is mobilization. The contractor is required to provide the materials on site on an as-needed basis and controls all of the delivery. And storing material on, on city streets has typically not been allowed. Yeah, I understand that we're moving forward with this, so I don't want to belabor the point. The biggest thing is making sure that the residents are not as inconvenienced as much as normally. So moving things around is important, making sure things are cleaned up are important. I'm a little concerned about the start times being, I believe in the staff reports at 8 o'clock because normally, based on my experience, construction crews gather around and they're ready to go. So where are they going to be staging at? Where are all the equipment's going to be? And just as the time when people are going to work, but I trust that we'll follow up on those type of complaints. My bigger question though is, is the $350,000 for this one project that should take about a year according to the schedule. I'm interested in understanding the scope of this for CSG. How did, how did that number get determined? Was it based on the valuation? How many hours is anticipated for the construction manager or project engineer? Sounds like that's what the person would be doing. And finally, since we're doing a pretty big water sewer project and those have been going on for a number of years since 2015, that it would seem like some analysis in bringing in a water sewer project manager, construction manager would be appropriate since $350,000 is a lot of money for that amount of time. And typically, my experience has been in, in working at the city and also working for our water department, that having a full-time project engineer for that amount of money is a little high. Actually, it's quite high. And so I'm concerned about the scoping of the project and the budget for that position. If you could please share some information on that.
Director?
Through the mayor. So I think I heard two questions there. I think the first one was kind of the peculiarity of calling out the specific construction mitigation impacts. I think one of the challenges that you have for construction projects is the contractors really try to bid the projects based on the work and the materials and time that they're going to use to, to implement and construct the project. Because we recently approved a temporary fencing standard, which is not as common within the area of the peninsula, we wanted to make sure that the contractor was aware of the changes so that it's called out so that they can properly account for that time. I understand that there is, there is a understanding that the mobilization and everything is borne by the contractor, but at the end of the day, the, everything that the contractor is doing for us is put in at the bid cost. And so the thing that controls that for us is that we actually bid it for the lowest price, so they're all being for the same items. We wanted to just be fair to the contractors so that they're aware, for the ones that have been doing work in the past in San Bruno, that now when we're doing this work, that there are additional construction. that there are additional construction mitigation impacts that we want to make sure that they're fully aware of that we will be implementing. And so that's why we're calling that out for the time being. I think it's helpful for us to just understand for as a city and for the contractor to understand that this is a requirement that we have recently approved so that they can implement that as part of the construction project. For the second and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the construction manager, I don't have the numbers breakdown in front of me, and I can definitely hear that with, with the council if requested. It is for construction management services. In terms of the construction management, it's calculated based on the type of work that's being done and the timeframe in which we expect to do it. It is a large operation and at times you may have multiple operations going on. And so the goal of this construction management support is to make sure we can accommodate that pace of construction in this area. I agree that if we're going to be doing a steady slew of projects, that we can have our own in-house construction management team or project manager or engineer that can help with that work. We do currently have recruitments out there for engineers. You know, the traffic engineer has been one position that we haven't been able to recruit for, for two years and it's been posted. And so I think that's some of the challenges. The, the labor market for engineers is a little thin right now. And there's, if you look on CalOps, there's a lot of vacancies and openings for it. And so it's just kind of the market that we're currently in. We do continue to try to fill our vacancies as much as we can. But we understand that the work also needs to be done. So if we do not have the appropriate staffing levels, we will try to supplement to make sure we move the projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo concerns again about this item being on consent. And I'll probably agendize a council comment at the next meeting. I can, I can just ask for it now that we start creating a minimum threshold of what can go on consent. I think it's just way too much to not have a discussion about it or not have a separate vote on, not have a presentation, not send a council member asking for it. And, and my, my, that's my comment. As far as my question goes, the contingency is about fifteen percent. You know, the average construction contingency is normally up to about ten percent, maybe twelve, thirteen. It seems like our contingencies are high here. And I'm just curious where we're getting this, the number from.
I believe fifteen percent contingency is what we typically apply to these water projects. The contingency does not necessarily mean that this project may spend the entire fifteen percent. If we're aware of the overall water fund, this is part of the program. So whatever savings we have goes back into the program. What we're really trying to do is to make sure we allow for the flexibility to accommodate any construction changes or any unforeseen conditions. So we can move the project forward much more quickly without having to do additional actions. Once those, once the project is complete, the remaining funds just goes back into the next project as far as the water pipeline replacement program or the sewer replacement program.
Yeah, and I, and I understand the need to move forward, but I do get concerned when larger, higher contingency fees are placed there so that doesn't have to come back to council. So I, I think that's also another discussion at some point we have to have because I'm seeing higher contingency fees than I feel like we, I would normally see outside of this role that I have. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Leave for the presentation and the additional information. Okay, seeing nothing else on item G at this time, I will see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on any of the consent items which are A through I. Seeing no hands at this time, we'll bring it back to council for action on consent.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent charter.
Okay.
Motion seconded, Hamilton, Medina. Thank you very much. Roll call these.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salavar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason. Aye. Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight, conduct of business, city clerk.
Item eight, a study session regarding the framework for the city's sustainability projects, including the implementation of reach codes, electric vehicle charging stations, climate action plan, flood plain management ordinance and construction and demolition debris ordinance.
Okay, and then what we will do is we'll start over at City Hall with the city manager to introduce and then the presenter.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. We are here tonight to have the city council with a presentation on various sustainability projects. And the council will recall much of this effort is a part of the city council's strategic initiatives. We'll be talking about a climate action plan, reach codes, and a number of other sustainability items. Tonight's presentation will begin with our community and economic development director Pamela Wu. And she will be supplemented by our management analyst in the community and economic development department, Rada. And so without further ado, we'll turn the presentation to Director Wu.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. My name is Pamela Wu. I have the honor to present to you the citywide sustainability project and its framework. So as City Manager Grogan mentioned, I have Chief Building Official Darcey Ashop and Management Analyst Rado Meta, and also a technical consultant from T R C Farhat Birmet with us tonight for any questions that council may have. To start with tonight's agenda, we'll start with the background as directed by city council in its twenty twenty one strategic initiative to adopt cities' reach code and climate action plan. We will talk about what we're doing and why we're doing, or why we're here tonight. And follow up with discussion that's split into five sections. Was first section devoted to reach code. Second section talks about electric vehicle charging infrastructure and station. And the first section that focuses on climate action plan, followed by the flood plain management ordinance amendment. And also we'll conclude the discussion with construction and demolition debris ordinance. We will come back with directions, what we are seeking from city council tonight and conclude tonight's presentation with any questions that council may have. Let's start with the background. As I mentioned, this is a, one of the strategic initiatives as directed by city council to complete the city's reach code and climate action plan. And today's purpose for the study session is to provide the council an update regarding the framework for city's environmental goals and priorities to facilitate city council discussion on the sustainability plans. The discussion intended to provide an overview of the sustainability development process to discuss the assessment of city's goals and progress related to greenhouse gas emission and also to review next steps. These proposed initiatives primarily will focus on how to reduce the city's carbon footprint and to become a more sustainable energy city. I will now turn the next section to Rado Meta to talk about the reach code.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Reach codes are local amendments that exceed the Building Energy Efficiency Standards Code and Green Building Standards Code. The adoption of reach codes is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reducing reliance on natural gas and gasoline through refocusing energy consumption towards electrification. Reach codes also provide safer and healthier homes for residents and also advance our climate goals. Staff recommends the adoption of reach codes to be effective at the same time as the twenty twenty two building and fire code update on January first, twenty twenty three. Staff is recommending that reach codes apply to new construction. Staff proposes that only new construction comply with reach codes and new construction will include any new buildings that are intended for single-family, multifamily, or non-residential uses such as office, commercial, space, or misuse. There are three pathways for reach codes. Three options are all-electric required, all-electric preferred, and natural gas ban. The all-electric required reach codes pathway require specific end uses to install electric appliances with certain exemptions. There is considerable interest in mandating all-electric new construction to eliminate any fossil fuel services in new construction. This pathway will assist the community in meeting the state's goal. Additionally, eliminating the use of natural gas can greatly reduce GHG emissions from buildings. From buildings, this pathway also allows certain exemptions for use types. Staff is recommending this pathway to align with the state's goal. The all-electric preferred pathway encourages electrification of buildings by achieving a higher energy efficiency level than the energy code using both natural gas and electricity. Energy efficiency improvements for mixed-feel buildings are typically implemented by requiring buildings to meet some marginal improvements in the energy design rating. This rating is calculated using CC-approved software that is used to demonstrate compliance with energy standards by builders. This pathway creates additional complexity in measuring the construction requirements and increases staff time and resources. The third pathway, which is the natural gas ban, reach code pathway prohibits gas hookups in new construction. This model requires an amendment to both local building code and health safety code. Oh, I'm sorry, this code, this amendment requires, this model requires amendment for both local building codes and health and safety codes. Few cities have adopted this ordinance, which is more aggressive than all-electric required and all-electric preferred model. However, natural gas bans receive more oppositions from businesses and stakeholders and are more difficult to implement. The adoption of reach code would apply to building appliances such as space heating, water heating, cooking, and clothes dryer. There are six potential exceptions to the recommend all-electric reach code options for city council to consider based on exceptions adopted in other cities. The first one is planning entitlement. Reach codes requirement shall not apply to projects with planning entitlement approved by the city prior to the effective date of the ordinance. The second proposed exemption is non-residential building containing a commercial kitchen may contain non-electric cooking appliances. The third proposed exemption is ADU. Accessory dwelling, dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units shall be exempt from all-electric building provisions of this section. The fourth exemption is non-residential buildings that will be constructed per standard stipulated by OSHPOD one and OSHPOD three clinic standards. This includes any construction that may contain non-electric space conditioning, water heating systems, and process load systems. All-electric building requirements shall not apply to new residential structures that designate a hundred percent of the dwelling units to be affordable. So affordable housing is the fifth proposed exemption. And the final exemption proposed by staff is technical infeasibility. Technical infeasibility exemption in the energy code amendments for unusual circumstances where an applicant can show that due to exceptional characteristics of the structure, property, or business involved, a literal enforcement of the code will result in practical infeasibility. If an applicant for a covered product believes that circumstances exist that make it infeasible to meet the requirements of this chapter, the applicant may request an exemption. In applying for an exemption, the burden is on the applicant to show infeasibility. Whenever there are practical difficulties involved in carrying out provisions of this technical code, the building official may grant modifications for individual cases. By the end of March, twenty twenty two, the statewide cost-effective studies should be published. These are the next steps if city council agrees with the staff to proceed with reach codes. We would be obtaining a concept in this study. It's a statewide cost-effectiveness study done by, by the state that would be published by end of March or beginning of April. And the full twenty twenty two energy code building codes should be published by the summer and staff will take into consideration the updated codes prior to modeling the new reach codes for city council. Staff will also conduct community and stakeholder outreach and provide technical assistance. If city council provides direction to proceed, staff will present reach codes ordinance for adoption in fall of twenty twenty two. The next section we would like to go over is electric vehicle charging station ordinance. Electric vehicle charging station infrastructure is part of the California Green Building Standards Code requirement. Twenty twenty two CalGreen requires that new construction add parking spaces with electrical panel capacity. For a cost study completed by Turner and Townsend, implementation of EV charging infrastructure is approximately point three percent of the overall construction cost. Currently, San Bruno has sixty-nine public charging stations, three of which are free. There are also active incentives within the county for various pork types for property owners when implementing EV charging infrastructure. To be eligible for incentives, applicants are required to enroll and participate in the technical assistance program. Based on the property and pork type, applicants are eligible for incentives between two thousand to eighty thousand dollars. California has the greatest number of registered electric vehicles, approximately forty-two percent of the electric vehicles nationwide. Two hundred and fifty thousand electric vehicles were sold in twenty twenty one. Additionally, Governor Newsom signed an executive order to end sales of new cars and trucks powered by gasoline or diesel by twenty thirty-five as part of the state's efforts to promote electric or zero emission vehicles. This table shows electric vehicle charging capacity and speed. Level one charges three to four miles per hour and is equivalent to standard home outlet. Level two charges ten to twenty miles per hour and is typically used for larger appliance loads in homes. Level three, which is also called DC fast charger, chargers, charges a hundred and fifty plus miles per hour and can be found at some supermarkets. This table here shows electric vehicle charging infrastructure. EV capable readiness requires a conduit to be installed to parking space and building electrical system has ample ample capacity to serve future load. An electric, an electrician would be required to complete the circuit before charging if possible. EV ready readiness requires parking spaces to be provided with all-power supply and associated outlets such as a charging station can, such that a charging station can plug in and a vehicle can charge. Finally, the EV charging station readiness includes an all-supply equipment which is installed at the parking space such that the electric vehicle can charge without additional equipment. The twenty twenty two CalGreen code includes key concepts for EV infrastructure requirements. CalGreen code requires that all new construction needs to include adding EV capable parking spaces which have electrical panel capacity, a dedicated branch circuit, branch circuit, and a raceway to the EV parking spot to support future electrification installation of charging stations. This table shows a CalGreen requirement and staff propose EV requirements for new construction based on building types. For one and two family dwelling, staff recommends to keep twenty twenty two CalGreen requirement as it is. For multi-family building, staff recommends to increase level two EV charging station to ten percent, increase EV ready to thirty percent, and add level one ready infrastructure for twenty-five percent of the parking spaces. For non-residential building, staff recommends to increase For non-residential building, staff recommends to increase level two EV charging station to 10% and increase level two EV capable to 20%. This table shows other nearby cities that have adopted this ordinance. Next steps for EV charging, city council directs staff to proceed with ordinance preparation and adoption by fall 2022. Can I just back over to the floor? Before I move on to the next section, I want to pause here and ask if council has any clarification, questions pertaining to reach code or EV charging infrastructure.
Thank you, Director, for taking the pause and asking that question. That might be a good idea. Questions from colleagues in regards to the first two presentations at this time? Vice Mayor Mason.
I was just in reviewing this. I was just curious to know if that had been considered in the past, particularly after the PG&E exclusion. I was just curious to know if this had been a topic of discussion or if it's just coming for the first time now.
If I could get clarification, is it on the reach code or the EV charging infrastructure?
Oh, I'll say the reach codes.
I believe this will be the first time city council has had a study session on this topic.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? If not, please proceed to section three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the next section we'll talk about is the Climate Action Plan. All-electric reach code, city council has had fire discussions on this topic, on Climate Action Plan. This was done back in 2011 and also in 2015. However, at the time, there were limited staff resources and other competing priorities. In addition to need at work, Vice Mayor Mason mentioned with the explosion, the Climate Action Plan, even though directed by city council in the past years, could never be done. So what we're looking at is a more recent update to comply with the current Climate Action Plan to provide a comprehensive framework that will help fight climate change by focusing on major sources of green gas emission in the city and also to provide a blueprint for the community's responses to challenges posed by climate change and provide tools for residents and businesses to curb those impacts of global warming. Even though the city has yet to adopt its own Climate Action Plan, I do want to highlight that there are some notable changes or initiatives that has been done in the city facilities or city occupy facility such as LED light bulbs and to put a temperature control on timer to make our effort to reduce the green gas emission, green house emission. So to prepare a Climate Action Plan, the first step is to develop a citywide GHG inventory. And this will determine which sectors are the greatest contributors and to establish a baseline which to set goals and measure progress. The latest inventory report San Bruno has received was the 2010 Community GHG and was only provided to the city in 2014. The report was prepared through the San Mateo County Energy Watch Program and was also funded by the California Utility Consumers. However, the report is outdated, so in order to complete the current San Bruno Climate Action Plan updated, the GHG inventory will be necessary. Presently, given that there's no identified budget allocated for CAP preparation, staff has been working closely with the county and also awaiting a response from the California Air Resource Board on the initiation of GHG inventory that is being prepared by RECON, a consultant, to collect data and for the 2018 to 2019 countywide inventory development. This could be provided to the city for free, but the completion schedule is within the control of the county. To date, the preliminary data collection has been underway and RECON will be reaching out to data partners by March 2020 to request authorization to add us these community utility use data. Possibly later on in the spring, the team will provide a GHG inventory and methodology update to each city, but it is unclear when the county will provide the individual city GHG inventory. When the inventory study is completed, then we'll move on to task two, which is to look at the forecast and target setting. Task three, to look at analysis and goals to reduce these greenhouse gas emission. Then, as any other plan and ordinance adoption, we will have to do sufficient environmental assessments equal analysis to be implemented and then we'll complete the draft for the Climate Action Plan for council to consider for adoption. Before that, we'll also reach out to the community to empower, to provide ample community engagement. As I mentioned, while there are no active grants or available budget to complete the city's Climate Action Plan, there are various resources for jurisdiction to initiate these actions, including the staff report. On the slide right now is the first option that staff has outlined to complete this effort. Option one would be relying the majority of the work on a city retained consultant in addition to providing additional support from city staff. For instance, the consultant will be, will be responsible for completing the green gas, greenhouse gas inventory and to provide the forecast setting and to do the reduction analysis. The consultant will also be responsible for preparing the sequel analysis and to draft the Climate Action Plan. City staff and consultant will work together on the community engagement. This option will take somewhere around 15 months or so and is estimated about 150,000 altogether to get a draft Climate Action Plan. It's worth noting that this cost does not include any implementation of costs that's associated afterwards. Option two involves heavy involvement from a fellowship program that could be offered through the Skyline College and Climate Corps and any other assistance that's provided by the county. In the past year, staff has contacted both Skyline College and Climate Corps to discuss ways that both programs can assist the city by completing our Climate Action Plan. This option will be, again, involving city staff's time, fellowship program, possibly two fellows from each of the program, and also participation through the county RICAP program and also other community resources that are available to us. As I mentioned earlier, each consultant will be responsible for each of the tasks in comparison to option one. This option has a estimated timeline of 19 to 20 months and a lower budget of $90,000 in comparison to the first option. Depending on the option that council decides to proceed, next steps include allocating appropriate budget between $90,000 to $150,000 in the next fiscal year to complete the Climate Action Draft. We'll also do other budget enhancement or additional city staff position. In the staff report, we discussed the need of having a possibly a halftime FTE as a sustainability position to assist the fellowship program to complete the city's Climate Action Plan if the city council directs staff to go with option two. We will also come back with additional recommendation of other available funding if we're able to find any for council to direct staff to proceed. Once the plan is ready for draft release, we'll come back with a adoption timeline for council to review and also to provide implementation process in other future meetings the council desires. With that said, I'm going to pause here and see if council has any questions on Climate Action Plan.
Thank you again for pausing. Is there any questions, Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, I definitely want to say thank you. I know we've been asking for this. You, in two of those slides, you have the breakdown of the different parts and can that be mixed and matched? Like, the consultant does the first part here and then option two has, if you go to the next slide, slide please, carbon rencon, that's not a consultant, that's the airborne?
That's the airborne also provided by the county.
And that's free, but we don't have a day going that's going to happen. So is it possible to take that first part for free? And then the last part, work community engagement, city staff and fellow, and let the consultants do the rest of the middle of that sandwich?
We could definitely look into it and come back with a modified budget and time period.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions at this time? No, please proceed, thank you.
Thank you. So the remaining two sections are a lot easier. The first section is a floodplain management ordinance. So the floodplain management ordinance covers construction in the flood-prone areas in the city and City of San Bruno is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program is managed by Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA that offers affordable flood insurance for city residents. In 2019, city council remembered that the city adopted its own floodplain management ordinance to align with the FEMA regulation, FEMA regulation, and this was Chapter 11.40 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Since the adoption, FEMA has come back to the city and wanting to do additional revision to the floodplain ordinance to include specifically Zone AH and add additional definition. So staff has been working closely with FEMA staff to provide that additional revision. I'm sorry, I forgot to switch this slide. And so we have forwarded the ordinance to FEMA. We're awaiting FEMA's approval on the proposed amendment. Once that's through, we'll come back for city, to city council for the ordinance amendment adoption. The last section is on construction and demolition debris. We call it a CND ordinance. Since 2011, the California Green Building Standards Code, CalGreen, was adopted that required the diversion of at least 50% of the construction waste that's generated for any new construction projects. Then 2017, the subsequent amendment were expanded upon what type of construction should be converted and required a conversion rate to a minimum of 65%. For the cities that are not in line with the CalGreen requirement can be fined up to $10,000 per day by the California Integrated Waste Management Board. Currently, the City of San Bruno has a ordinance that requires at least 50% of the waste to be recycled for existing buildings and at least 65% to be recycled for new buildings. The CalGreen does not distinguish between existing versus new buildings, and that says that the city's current CND ordinance is not quite in alignment with the CalGreen requirement. So what staff is proposing is a ordinance amendment to align the CalGreen requirements with the city ordinance. And also, we would like to research other possible automated waste tracking tools. If council agrees with staff's recommendation, we'll complete the ordinance amendment by requiring 65% diversion for all construction and demolition from that sale and by requiring 100% of all rock, concrete, dirt, and vegetative debris from a project to be recycled. Staff will also be updating the management plan. Once the draft is completed, staff will present the ordinance amendment adoption in fall 2022 and follow up with the possibility of utilizing, as I mentioned, the automated tracking device that will decrease the staff time and also increase user-friendly for the developers and homeowners. This, so subsequent to the ordinance adoption, staff will also follow up with RFP to identify adequate vendor for this automated tool, and that is anticipated to happen in 2023. That will conclude the five sections that's discussed in the staff report. I do want to bring council's attention back to the directions that we're seeking tonight. So taking council back on the reach code. Should I pause for Councilmember Medina for your question now or should I proceed?
Who would you like?
Through the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we were able to ask a couple of questions earlier and I don't want to disrupt your presentation, but I didn't want to get too far out of whack with a couple of questions that I had about the zoning of the flood zones and a quick question on the percentage of waste that is currently being diverted. Is it okay to ask those?
Director, would that be okay if we go ahead to those two sections and then we can go back to Council, Councilmember Medina? Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for the disruption. I just, I'm just not really familiar for the Zone AH. How much more of the zone are we talking about? Because I know that the city really tried to revise the amount of residences that were in the flood zone. Is there, can you talk a little bit more about the Zone AH and is it getting much bigger, a little bit bigger, is it getting a little tweaked or what?
So we will look into it, but what I understand is that it's not additional area, but it's more of a complication to call it Zone H. So it's not a new zone, it's not an extended area.
Thank you, that's reassuring. And my last question is, do we have the numbers of the amount of waste or construction debris that's being currently diverted?
I believe our current ordinance requires 50% recycle for existing buildings and 65 for new construction, new buildings.
And we're meeting those?
We're meeting those. Those are in our current code.
Right, okay, and we're complying, so everything's good. Okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry.
I don't know. Any other questions from colleagues on those two sections? Since we've gone through all the sections right now, what I would like to do, if I could just pause, Director, and see if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on any of those items that were shown and presentations. And then we'll bring it back to council to go through the directions that staff is looking for. Seeing none up at this time, we'll bring it back to council and, and staff, if you could give us through the directions that you'd like to get from us and we'll take them as you see fit.
Of course. Thank you. So the first direction that we would like to receive from council is in regard to the reach code. The first question asks if the council agrees with the staff recommendation to proceed with the reach code. And then the second question asks if the city council agrees with staff's recommendation to apply all-electric reach code with the exceptions that have been outlined in the staff report for new construction only.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Since I meant we're going to go around to get consensus, I'll start the ball rolling. I'm a big yes on both. I'm super happy that we're, that we're addressing this. I know that this has been a long time coming and there's always been competing priorities and this is certainly another time where there could be many competing priorities, but as we heard from public comment and, 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 you know, are here constantly, you know, we need to start taking these kinds of actions now. So I'm a big yes on both.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thanks again for this, the reach codes. I'm, I'm the, I'm on the board of directors of Peninsula Clean Energy, which is San Mateo County's official electricity provider, and San Bruno is one of the cities that hasn't gone and taken much action on this. So this is really big. So I am in favor of one and two. My, my question- And two, my question here then would be, we're going to take input from the community and from the developing community as well. And it's my understanding that the majority of the new projects are already all-electric. It's my understanding that the Aperture Building is an all-electric building, and it's just moving in that direction because they're figuring out that it's cheaper to provide all-electric than to provide the gas. So I fully support this, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
I wanted one clarification first. So back on slide with the options, there was an all-electric required, and there was an all-electric preferred. So are we talking preferred or required?
Through the mayor, if I can get back to my slide first.
Thank you.
You're proposing all-electric required.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying. I wasn't exactly sure which one of those. So it looks like required is slightly more stringent than preferred. And I also, I support that as well. I used to be on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, and I know that it was a concept that, it actually didn't even come up back in the beginning of that until that group started rolling. I know that, I think this goes back to 2019 when these codes were first introduced. And so I know a lot of cities jumped on quickly once the clean energies, the clean energy groups, not just ours, but the other clean energy groups started adopting these, and it definitely got some traction. So I'm definitely glad to see us getting on board as well.
Thank you. And I just wanted to circle back to Councilmember Medina and Hamilton. Since this has just been clarified, you're both okay with the required? Got two thumbs up. And I am both on board with one and two, and as required. Is there any other, Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, I would like to hear more about the preferred. And I only say this because there was a, I thought it was a great opinion piece by John Mays in the Daily Journal. And what he says is, let me see, I'm trying to actually find the part that I remembered. He says, if we're, this is on restrictions on natural gas. But specifically, it can be way more complicated than just taking out a gas appliance and replacing it with an electric one. The kitchen circuit could be maxed out of the electrical panel or even the service. Replacing all could be incredibly costly, at least $10,000 or maybe even more. And that's not even covering appliances. There should be full studies in the actual and complete cost of moving from dual commodities of natural gas and electricity. And specifically, he really talks about how this impacts low-income areas. So I would actually like to hear more about, and I may be in the, not in consensus, but I would actually like to hear more about what the preferred would be, what the phasing process would be, and then what the actual impact would be on households of different income brackets.
Through the mayor, if I may. So I would like to take a step back before I answer Vice Mayor Mason's question. So what we're proposing is all-electric, but keep in mind, staff's also recommending six exceptions. So the REACH Code will apply to new construction only. For any homeowner who's renovating their home, they're not required to provide REACH Code, to comply with REACH Code. And part of the exceptions include any planning entitlement project has received their approval prior to ordinance becomes effective. Any non-residential building that has a commercial kitchen, ADUs. So any ADUs that's in an existing home, we're proposing to exempt from the REACH Code. And also, any building that will have to comply with state-held planning and standards, we're also proposing to have them not comply with the REACH Code. Affordable housing. So if developer is able to provide a 50% or less AMI, which is a very low-income affordable housing, they will be exempt. Lastly, any other technical infitability that will make REACH Code a challenge. They could also apply for exemption. So with that said, so the way we're looking at it is that if the majority of the new construction, taking out all these exceptions, should be electric-ready. So what Vice Mayor Mason was talking about is mostly older buildings that will have challenges to swap out or replace their gas appliances with electric appliances. That will not be part of the staff's recommendation tonight.
Let me hear what Councilmember Hamilton says.
Yeah, I read that same opinion piece that you referred to. And you're correct, it was really good. But I think what the author was really getting at was that last piece that the director just mentioned, in that the ordinance that was being considered in Half Moon Bay was that existing structures would have to phase out their natural gas appliances by, I think it was like 2040 or 2045 or something. And that, I think is, can be pretty problematic. And I didn't see that in here, and I wouldn't be supportive of that. But that's what I think that author was getting at in terms of the inequality pieces of it and all of that. Get that out.
Any other comments from colleagues? Director, do you feel you have a direction on that? Those two questions? You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, I assume Vice Mayor provided a thumbs up for both questions?
We can ask the Vice Mayor.
I'm actually trying to pull up the presentation because I know you got it, but it was at 4:30 this afternoon. So I didn't have a chance to see it with our meeting starting at 5:00. But I just want to take a quick look one more time. So just to be clear, so this is only based on the, I'm actually looking at Slide 7. But this is only on new construction. So essentially, if somebody's demolishing their house and rebuilding a house, that's considered new construction. And there would be no way that if somebody's, I'm just thinking of instances that have already come up. So if somebody's just remodeling their kitchen, right? This isn't going to be an issue.
That would not apply.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next direction staff's looking for, please?
The second section that talks about the EV, the Electrical Vehicle Charging Infrastructure. We just want to know if City Council agrees with staff's recommendation to proceed with the adoption of the ordinance for new construction only.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I support this, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
I also support it. I think this is, I think this is in line with what our neighbors are doing. And it also doesn't seem too onerous as well because we're just making sure that things are ready to go for EV. We're not mandating that there be a charger in place for every dwelling. And, you know, they can put them, you know, they can be, we're making it so they can be easily installed when the occupants have an electric vehicle. So that's, I think this makes sense, and I will guess.
And I won't reiterate, but I'm in favor as well. Any other feedback from colleagues? Vice Mayor says a thumbs up? She's speeding it up. Okay. Director, did you have what you need from council for direction?
I'm sorry, did I get a confirmation from Councilmember Salazar as well?
Yeah, I tried to get mine in there, I may have been speaking over the mayor. But yes, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Moving on to the first section, that's in regard to the Climate Action Plan. First question, does City Council want to move forward with the city's climate action plan? Second question is to ask council for direction which of the options that staff presented to proceed with the climate action plan preparation?
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, again, thank you for the climate action plan. We're moving forward with it. So for one, yes. My comment earlier about maybe there was a way to kind of do a hybrid between having the free first part of it done, and then a consultant, and then staff with the intern. However it is, and I say that knowing that we've heard, council has heard how busy staff is. And taking another person away from doing the work that currently they already have, that's something I'm not interested in. It's not too much more money, it gets done in a lot quicker. So I'm in support of both of these as stated, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So definite yes on number one. Or number two, I do, I like the idea of having, bringing in our partners from up at Skyline and to help with some of this. But I also have concerns about staff time. And so, you know, I would be in favor of a hybrid, but you know, obviously, we would need to see the details about that. But, you know, on the face of it, I would be more in favor of option two. But I do, I am very much intrigued by the possibility of maybe bringing a consultant in for some of those steps in order to save staff time.
Councilmember Salazar?
So I will also agree with number one. But for number two, I think I'm still leaning toward option two. Just, I mean, the savings is considerable, I think, at least in my opinion. And it doesn't take too much longer. And I feel having our staff participate in this might actually contribute to creating a better end product. If we have people that are very in tune to what the city's needs are and where the city is going, it might actually, I think that involvement might generate a better product in the end.
Vice Mayor Mason?
I was going to say the same that Councilmember Salazar said. I do agree with that. I also think that this reminds me a little bit of the opportunities that the police and fire have, these pathways to work and, you know, these opportunities. And this is really a great opportunity to open the door to potential students at Skyline or at one of our local colleges to not just work on the climate action plan, but also to see if they like the City of San Bruno, see if they like government work. I also think the institutional knowledge is really important as we heard about, you know, the various program managers at one of our previous meetings. I think even more so important that we keep this knowledge and we learn it in-house. So I'm on the same page as Councilmember Salazar.
Repeat, I'm on the same page with Councilmember Salazar and Vice Mayor Mason. Directors, did I give you enough guidance?
Yes, and to confirm, staff has been working on the floodplain management ordinance. We'll bring back the adoption and fall, so is the construction and demolition degree management plan. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, thank you for the report. Thank you for getting us through that efficiently and effectively, very much appreciated. Okay. Is there anything else, if not on that, on the conduct of business? We'll move on to number nine, comments from council members. First, we'll start off with our Vice Mayor, Linda Mason. Request council consensus to place a Ukrainian flag on city flagpole in front of San Bruno City Hall to signify solidarity and support by the City of San Bruno to the country of Ukraine for the ensuing 30 days. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Since the invasion of Ukraine by Russia, American credit card providers, Mastercard and Visa, announced last Saturday that they would suspend their services in Russia. McDonald's paused their operations, Starbucks paused their operations, Coke has paused their operations. City halls across the world are changing their regular lights to blue and yellow. Art scenes are changing around the world to symbolize yellow and blue. And just as far as numbers go, the population of Poland has doubled since the invasion only weeks ago. With women fleeing Ukraine in just two weeks, women and children are estimated to have left to the tune of 1.5 to 2 million individuals. The world has opened their arms. This morning here in San Bruno, as I was passing through Caltrain, through the Caltrain underpass, a man was actually standing on the corner next to the utility box painted with the American flag waving the Ukrainian flag. The flag would be a representation that San Bruno stands with the people of Ukraine like the rest of the world. I'm asking my fellow council members tonight to support this request and represent that our city with a heart represents our heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Hamilton?
Absolutely happy to provide concurrence for this, I'm fully in support. My own question is, should it only be for 30 days? I mean, I would love to know that this conflict would be over in within that time, but that might be unlikely. So, though, of course, leaves it open for how long would it stay up? But, you know, I just wanted to point that out.
Councilmember? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I also support this. It's really unbelievable, you know, I, I think, what are we, 1945? You know, it's like World War II type of things. And it's really unbelievable. And I think showing our support is the right thing to do.
Councilmember Salazar?
I agree too, it's a great gesture. And I don't know that they'll know in Ukraine that little San Bruno is standing with them. But I think it is a really nice gesture. And I think a lot of the other cities in the area are doing the same thing. Just logistically, I would ask, how easy is it going to be to procure the Ukrainian flag? They may be quite popular these days, I imagine. So just, you know, something to consider if it takes us a while to get it, and that the timing of, you know, when the 30 days would start and how long we would do it has to be factored in there as well.
I concur as well, and thank you, Joe, all of your comments. And unless City Hall wants to contribute, but, yeah. And Councilmember Medina is correct, you know, I'm kind of fixated to the, or watching the TV so much because it's just so unbelievable, and see what's transpiring today. Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Medina, did you have your hand up? Okay, got it. Vice Mayor, did you have any other items that you'd like to bring up under comments?
I did, but I can't wait until your items are done, to more general bend.
Okay. I'll try to make mine quick, if I can do that. Under myself, the first item is Commission Committee Board Virtual Gathering. I talked to the city manager about this, but what I had envisioned was, as we've all been doing Zoom, was to have a kind of an all-together thank you through this COVID times, and then continuing to meet. And I just felt it was a, might be easier logistically. Folks, the chairs could introduce the members on their particular body. Maybe they talk about one or two things that they're currently dealing with with goals and objectives. And I think sometimes that also helps each other to hear from the other groups, the committee commissions and boards. You know, there's a concern as far as just timing and... You know, there's a concern as far as just timing and logistics via Zoom, but that is something that I would think I'd like to see us do since we have those options. And all of our committee commission board members have been on Zoom, and I think it would just be a nice way to say thank you as well, if they haven't seen each other in some time. Councilmember Hamilton?
So absolutely in favor of having an event in these before. Obviously, they were in person. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, we are coming toward the end. We're, you know, we talked earlier tonight and we'll be talking soon about going back in person. And I wonder if it would be worth it just to wait another month? And then, you know, to make sure that we're out of where we are and to have it be in person. Because I think it would be a, you know, a more impactful event, and it might be a nice way to, you know, welcome everybody back to real life, back in person, to do an event at the senior center as has been done in the past. Just wanted to throw that out there as a potential.
No, and you're on the right path because that has been something that even, there has been brainstorming as far as, do you have all the annual reports done at once so everybody can be a part of it, right? And they can hear from each other. I also just know that we have staff time too, as far as getting the facility, getting it up, getting everybody invited, now there's refreshments. So I was trying to be mindful of that, but the city manager has already been on that path about maybe making it a nice event that, or an event everybody's together to hear from one another. Councilmember Medina, almost forgot my last name.
Hey. Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely agree. I think it's a great thing to do. I think the idea was a couple of years ago to have a thank you event every other year. And since the COVID, and since we can't have virtual, that waiting another month or two probably would be fine to get it planned better and people can kind of mark up their calendars. And hopefully, we can meet in person and have a nice thank you and update from our boards, commissions, committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And then City Hall, please, City Manager.
Thanks for the explanation. I understand now what it is. I think, I thought it, I think it would be nice, just listening, that it be in December. Like it would be nice to have a thank you at the end of the year. And you know, it's, we'll know exactly where we are with COVID. It'll actually kind of be like a gathering of the holidays, which I think would be wonderful. And if it's like a couch to the thank you, why not invite our staff to the event? And so I, I mean, I think with more time, maybe there'd be even a potential for a nicer event, getting a nice room. But I love the idea. I would say just maybe we wait till December, we'll be in a much better position, we would hope with COVID. And like I said, it would be a nice kind of end of the year, beginning of the year celebration. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate it. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to go before Councilmember Salazar. I just wanted, I'm uncomfortable making a statement now, but I didn't want to tell the Councilmember Salazar.
I appreciate that. So I'll be really quick. I'll say, I support the idea as well, whether virtual or in person. I'm a little leery about, you know, where we might be in a couple of months with COVID. But looking at the end of the year, maybe that there's a little more security in that. I know people, even though, you know, mask restrictions are starting to go away, some people choose still to be cautious and not participate in things that are unnecessary. But yeah, maybe looking farther into the year might give us a little more certainty. So I think that's a good idea.
City Manager?
Sure. Thank you. Just wanted to say, wholeheartedly support the concept. We've absolutely had conversations about this internally. I remember during our strategic initiative discussions, and we talked about strong governance. We actually talked about what the mayor says, not having the individual committee presentations that happen in the October, November, December timeframe at various council meetings, but sort of bringing everybody together at that time, certainly in person. The only few considerations that I wanted to highlight for council were, one, whether it's virtual or in person, it does require significant staff time to plan the event, to work with the boards and commissions. If we want them to present the work that happened now, is that each staff liaison works with the committee and the committee chair to put together a presentation of their annual work product. I know we would change that, but I do still envision the staff liaisons having conversations and working with the committee members if we want to have some portion of this event that will have the committee members say what, you know, give some highlight on what they did. And so if that's a part of it, I do think providing some time for that work product to occur and that planning to happen. And when we talk about having it in person, which I know is what everyone envisioned previous thing called COVID, I think the only site that we really have in town right now that would work was probably the Environmental Science Center at Skyline College. When the wreck is built, we would have a beautiful community room at the Aquatic and Rec Center. Or we could do it in the gymnasium there, that's farly city facility. Outside, it may be used in somewhere at the high school or the middle school. It would probably be Skyline in that new facility built up there. And so, you know, if we do that around the holidays, in the December timeframe, I think it gives us time to plan for it and know a little bit of where we are COVID, with COVID-19. Just a few thoughts.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next item, Joint Use Agreement between the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Park School District. I'm just bringing this up not after we're picking at it, but that is an agreement that has been being worked on at some level, has expired to my knowledge. There was no extension of the agreement. And I would just like to get it back on track. We learned that we want to kind of keep the agreements updated, and I know there's a transition going on in the school district. But I would just like to bring that back up as just far as seeing if we can solidify that. Vice Mayor?
So Councilmember Medina and I met with the district, I want to say in December, right when you appointed me to that committee. But we met within that month, and we did bring up the joint use agreement. And at that time, the superintendent was switching out. And so we're just waiting at this point to get a response from the school district.
Beautiful. Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Manager?
Yeah, I just want to expound upon that. We had an internal meeting with staff this week and back for a meeting on Monday of next week, where staff will be meeting with the new superintendent and CDO at the San Bruno Park School District to do a deep dive on that agreement. And so we are working toward that. And I know we'll resend out the current version of that, just so council has it, and both track changes and the clean version. But based on prior conversations, we did want to do a deep dive with the new interim superintendent. And he certainly, in our prior meetings, is excited about doing that. And there'll be two staff people from the city and two staff people from the district do a deep dive on Monday.
And then just again, always, I was concerned about additional cost or things that could be modified within that. So just if we keep the eye on that. Next item, placing a plaque on a bench at Centennial Park to acknowledge Harry Costa. So a great question came up from the Vice Mayor, which was, so what's kind of been the common practice? So if you go to the city park, you'll see benches that are there with plaques that are acknowledging a family member or what have you. And those are a cost to the person, the family that is putting that or a friend who is putting that together. So it does not cost the city. Sometimes there is some installation so that the city knows it's done correctly. Dale Costa, and I think we're all familiar with who Harry Costa is. Dale Costa, one of her wishes upon his passing was to have a plaque at that because of their interest on Seminole Avenue, their interest on going to West Coast Cafe, honestly. There is a mural that is up there. And you know, it's, I've tried to guide toward inside the city park as far as where we wanted other people like Carolyn Livinggood and others and her desire to have it there. Obviously, the postponement was, or even discussing it, was because there was going to be monies put in so things would be modified and changed. And so what do you do? But time is passing on. And so that is why I wanted to bring it forward because there, we haven't done it where we've done it in other parks, Boulder and Tree, but there are things that are throughout our community to honor and remember. But that is a request, and I know what he has done for San Bruno with the Mr. City Program, which has been phenomenal. I don't think it would, you know, wouldn't be where it's at without him. And other the things that he's done, whether it's Lions or whether it's all the other stuff over there. But that's why I've, I know it has to be worked on, of course, and it would be paid for, of course. Vice Mayor?
So I only met Mr. Costa once. I don't really know a lot about Mr. Costa, but I know that since I've been in office, there's a mural that has gone up that has Mr. Costa and that has Mr. Marshall up. And I've heard about both of them. I've also heard about Dennis Sammett. I've also heard about Chris Palace. And so I think that as I'm hearing this as an outsider who actually doesn't know any of these people, I would rather wait until we have a plan for the park, since we don't have a plan yet. And then, and then really maybe as a community decide, you know, how people are remembered that represented the community. And I think it's really nice if there's a mural up already that represents Mr. Costa and Mr. Marshall. But maybe a more community oriented method for Centennial Park. And I think part of my concern is also that we don't really have a plan for Centennial Park yet. And so I'd rather incorporate this into the larger plan. So that's just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I didn't hear where Mrs. Costa wanted the bench. I didn't hear that clearly. Do we know? Is it City Park?
Uh, no.
Centennial Park?
Like an existing bench or one of those that were taken out during the COVID times on the side of West Coast.
Understood. I think, first of all, the mural was done by the Lions. So I think doing something for Mr. Costa and respecting the wish where it would be is really important. So it's a bench that would be likely bolted in and that could be easily moved. But I think we should be doing it sooner rather than later. And knowing that we can move it if we really need to. Yes, we're going to be doing things there, but that might be a long time. And I think, I think Mr. Costa is deserving to have that recognition where his wife wants it. So I would be supportive of that.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I'm in favor of this on the face of it. I do think, you know, the work that's going to be done at Centennial Park, at least the, you know, we approved a small makeover that is supposed to happen pretty quickly. So I think it would make, it would be prudent to wait until we know what that's going to be. Because I believe that information is going to be coming to us quite soon. And maybe we'll hear from the city manager about that right now. But I am in favor of a yes, and I just think it would make sense just to make sure that we're not doing extra work for no reason if there's going to be a makeover of that same space, you know, in the very near future.
Thank you. City Manager? I'm sorry, City Manager.
Vice Mayor, that was a hand from a prior.
No problem. Thank you. Councilmember Salazar?
So I also support the concept, but I agree with that it should be incorporated into the bigger plan for the area so that we don't have to move it and then it, you know, we move forward with it, that it can be part of a more enduring presence in that area. So yeah, I agree in moving forward with it, with those considerations.
Good. Great. Thank you very much. I'm gonna, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
I have one.
Oh, no, that's okay. So I mean, I think it's important to understand then what the process is. I know another community member also made a request recently for an acknowledgement and there's been a response. So is it the mayor that makes the decision and then brings it to council like we're doing tonight? Can we refer people over to you, Mayor Medina? What is, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out what the process is for others who may want the same thing.
Well, I think it depends. This is kind of unique because there's nothing there at this area where in other parks that there has been. But I see the city managers hand up, and now, this is council comments. This is for everybody, you know. And when we're all, we're throughout our community and we know the things that maybe should come up. There is about naming a room or facility. Yes, there is a process to that. But anyways, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Medina. So the city does have a bench naming process. And while I haven't pulled that up, if memory serves me correctly, it's a cost of roughly $1,200 that was set quite a long time ago that actually, believe it or not, does cover the cost of a commercial grade bench for a park. And so staff has been looking at ways to adjust that policy and obtain some, a little ground truth, you know, on that. But that is an active policy for the city. With regard to Centennial Park, we have a number of preliminary designs. There's a meeting that has been scheduled with the Downtown Committee, and then we want to go to the Park and Rec Committee and then bring the design back to the city council. It's sort of, would take a long time to give a full update on where we are. But reviewing the designs and costs to achieve that objective that council set for us, we're still working on it. We'll be seeking input from others and getting back to you. If there is a desire to add a bench in Centennial Plaza that we hope to embark on within really soon, I mean, we had initially hoped to be doing that already. And so, you know, I think with finalizing the design and getting bids, we are several months away, but not a year away. So it would be my recommendation that should the city council like to add an element to that future design, you, at the very least, wait until we have a design that has been vet through the various bodies so that if we do order a bench, knowing that we would need to talk about where that allocation comes from and where that full cost is and the delta and all that. But if we do do that, we're at least ordering a bench that will fit with the new design versus ordering a bench that maybe fits what's there today. And then because we've dedicated it, we've dedicated it, we just say, hey, you know what? The new design, yes, but we're going to put this bench, even though it doesn't match in the park. And so, you know, I think we're within month of that. And so my recommendation would be to pause on the direction to direct staff tonight to do that on an immediate sense. And again, there's the financial issue that we should talk about if there's council direction tonight to do it in expedited fashion.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I just want to apologize to everyone. For some reason, I was thinking Posey Park. So at Centennial Plaza, yes, there, I absolutely agree, and I apologize for delay.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry to clarify. This is the first one that's come to us in my time here. So I'm just, for clarification, is this, because I went, there's nothing on the benches now of the ones in front of West Coast Cafe? So is the proposal that the family will be paying for the bench or the plaque? Or is the request coming to us because the city will be paying for it?
No. To my knowledge, when I worked at the Parks and Rec and still, last year when there was a plaque placed on the bench, it came at the cost of the family.
Okay. I mean, because if there is.
Unless that's changed. Or I guess staff would say, well, if you're directing it, it's to do that. But no, it has, it had been at the cost of the city. The thing that happened in City Park at one point, there were so many boulders and benches that the city had to say, okay, no more here in this park. You can go to another park because it was just, you know, we were running out of spaces.
Well, I was just going to say, if, at least to have something that there's no, there's no plaque on the current benches. So as a, something for the time being, because we don't know how long it'll take for the park, is putting a plaque on the existing bench as opposed to just getting a whole new bench would be an alternative. But like I said, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure there's a process. And the city manager says there's a process. So long for following it. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Only a couple more items for me. I, only a couple more items for me. One is, next, I told you last, last meeting, we have some stuff, transportation information on Samtrans, Transportation Authority, Caltrans and Bart. Just wanted to bring up to my colleagues that I've been meeting with a lot on, on the Samtrans. It is the reimagins come out. That means the new routes. That means all of that collaboration with the school district within the county on trying to make that function for the, um, that's a living, breathing document that can be modified if needs or the ridership requires it or, or needs it. And also in regards to Transportation Authority, I met with the San Francisco Chairman of the Transportation Authority. He's on the Board of Supervisors, just to talk about governance and connectivity and about the 101 managed lanes. But also as we've had and looked to the Transportation Authority that issued monies, both city managers from South City and, and San Bruno attended for grant monies. This is monies that have been awarded back from 215, 216, I can't remember exactly. But great separations like what we have on San Bruno Avenue, it costs over $300 million now a year, a year, I'm, I'm sorry. And cities are now having to come up with 50% of that at times. So what I am doing is with Josh Becker on the 35th, having a great separation roundtable to try to help whether it's us, whether it's El City or other communities in our district to get funding from the state since they have these monies. On Caltrans, I've met also with the state senator, went down and, and met him and we were talking about the concerns on the encampments. They're trying to hire an extra contractor to deal with the litter, the encampments, adopt the highway. They're trying to offer monies to even cities if they can possibly find folks to help clean. They're backlogged on those street signs that you see on El Camino Real. I have met with a board of director from BART, just to go into BART situation after the Vice Mayor and I were at a chat with the chief and listening to what he was saying was happening at BART. And that, that day that I was down there with some of my colleagues got enlightened through the condition of the facility, the way it stepped up, the lighting. And so I'm working on that. There will be a roundtable with that with other jurisdictions in Northern California, northern county that are not represented through the current board members. So that's just a quick, I know it's getting late. Lastly, and most importantly, congratulations to the Cappuccino High School girls varsity basketball team for winning the CCS championship. First time in history of Cappuccino, this girls' basketball have won. You have it comprised of 14 players, nine which are seniors, two juniors, two sophomores and one freshman. And they made it to their CCS. It was exciting to watch on that Saturday. They made it through round one to round two. It was extremely close. They got it within two points. It ended up at the end at four points. But it, it is history that they made. They did a great, great job. The fans and parents and the students really rallied behind everyone. So I'm planning to do through us some kind of acknowledgement to them, but this was the final game, how they made it through. So obviously, as the coaches say, we're focusing on then, we'll deal with the congratulations later. So I just wanted to acknowledge them because I think they just did a fantastic job and they made history. So that's it for me. I think that was enough. Colleagues, comments from yourselves. Vice Mayor, you said you had some other.
Yeah. So mine was just in regards to the, the International Women's Day. So just some highlights for everyone. The, the pay gap in equality continues where Hispanic Latina women are still making half the earnings of their white male counterparts, working the same job. While 47% of labor force is female, 62% of minimum wage jobs are held by women. As of the beginning of 2021, amongst the largest 100 cities in the United States, the average percentage of women on city councils with at-large seats was 40.1%, while the average percentage of women on city councils with single-member districts was 39.4%. Women of color make up 14% of mayors in the nation's 100 largest cities. Overall, women representing municipal offices was 30.5%. In San Bruno, the council has consistently held a seat out of five. The importance of representation cannot be underestimated. The struggles women face cannot be neglected. There was an article I was reading recently about the New York City Council where a few years ago the city was criticized for being progressive and having low representation of women. Today, women hold 31 of 51 seats on the council. The increase in representation was applied partly due to ranked choice voting and largely to removing obstacles from, from women running for office. We all know that running for office presents its own obstacles absent running unopposed. But running for office is harder. You have a full-time job. You have young children or children of any age. You are a caregiver and the list goes on and on. While running for office is a choice, representation of these areas is significantly needed to ensure that those that are so busy working to make a living are involved in decisions that impact their quality of life and representation matters. On a different level, anyone watching what's happening in Ukraine right now cannot be but endeared by the women leaving strollers at train stations for other women fleeing their home country to make their arrival a little easier. The Germans with signs at train stations accepting women and children, inviting them into their homes with no end date. The countless women fleeing alone, without resources and with the responsibility of protecting their children in our future. So today, I want to acknowledge and comment that it is International Women's Day. And while there are so many women to acknowledge, I choose to acknowledge my own mother and grandmother, without whom I would not be who I am. They invested their struggle into my success and have supported me in all the ways that mattered most. In fact, about an hour ago, when I wrote this, I added this, my mom, after a lot of helping with our children after school, being a caregiver for my grandma, my abuelita, messaged me that she had left her shmolet at the doorstep so that I had food to eat after the council meeting. There's definitely nothing like a mom. How could I not acknowledge these women on International Women's Day as a city council member representing women? They are all the giants on whose shoulders I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Other colleagues with comments, please? Councilmember Medina.
If, that was beautiful, Linda. You know, mothers are really amazing people, right? But that goes, that goes without saying in a way. Vice Mayor, if, if I, if I may, to close tonight, in memory of a beloved member of our community, Javier Guerra Vandala was the, he was the custodian at Bel Air Elementary School for a number of years. And unfortunately, he passed February 27th. He was a big man and, and always smiling and his heart was even bigger. Anytime I was down at Bel Air, he, hey, what can I do? You're here. What, you know, how can I help? And, and he, so many, so many great things our community said about him and it's truly a loss for, for everyone that knew him. So if we can please conclude this meeting with a moment of silence in his memory, that would be beautiful.
And also to keep his family in our thoughts and prayers.
Right.
Other council members? Okay. With that, then why don't we, if we could, please, take a moment and thought? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you to everyone. But to, for some of us, colleagues, the night continues. So we are going, we did not conclude our closed session, so we are going to go back into closed session. I put the manager's name as a link. And this is for public employment pursuant to government code section 54957, city attorney. So with all that, have a good evening and colleagues and staff, we will see you in closed session.